All right, everyone, let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. A thank you to Dandy Alessandro, who was supposed to be away on business and changed his schedule. In order to go into closed session, the board needs a supermajority. And Chad and Eric are taking their adults to college. And so, thank you, Dan, for making that sacrifice. Mary, would you do attendance, please?
Certainly. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Griffith, excuse, Secretary Hanser, present, Treasurer Bailey?
Here.
Trustee De Alessandro?
Here.
Trustee Foster, excuse, Trustee Schaper?
Here.
Thank you very much, Mary. Superintendent Weaver, any changes to the board agenda?
None tonight.
All right, thank you. We have before us number three, the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the July 12, 2022, regular meeting. We have the minutes of the July 12, 2022, closed meeting. And then we have the July bills payable. And then, D, we have a couple new hires that are mentioned. Would someone, please, put this motion on the floor? Mary?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Corey, support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number four, Board of Education Matters. The first topic is the Honor Community Health Clinic presentation. Todd, please.
All right, before Todd gets started with the presentation, first of all, he's the new executive director of Student Services and Wellness. He's going to present on the benefits of the partnership. Just to clarify, when we had last presented at the board, we had presented a plan to remodel a classroom to try to make for the clinic. Unfortunately, and everything else, the disruption to the area, as well as the actual bids for the project, came back too expensive to do it this time. And so, we pushed on Honor Community Health, who contacted the state. They have been working, and they are very cooperative. They want to help. They bring a lot of services, which Mr. Barless will be talking about, that could benefit both the recovery and hopefully preventing any future instances in the future as well, too. And so, they are looking just to partner with us at this point, come into the... They'll be in another section of the building. They will not be bringing... They've already gotten permission from the state to not bring community into the building. They're going to do any community assistance through telehealth visits, which would be just over, obviously, the Internet. And then, they will help as well if there's a situation at another school, a health situation, they will travel to that school. So, just to clear up. So, we will not be doing the construction project. They pulled it. It was, like I said, it was just impractical at that point.
All right, thank you for that update. And Mr. Barless, welcome. And please, go ahead. Is there a green light? Press the... No, sir, on the microphone stand, right behind. Hit that little... Yep, there we go. Now we're here.
Perfect. Thank you for having me. So, Honor Community Health Clinic, just an overview of the partnership. Studies have shown the value of developing comprehensive school mental health programs and helping students achieve academically and have access to experiences that build social skills, leadership, self-awareness, caring connections to adults in their school and the community. So, if we, as a district, establish this partnership with Honor Community Health, the information in this partnership overview will represent probably one component of our district's comprehensive school mental health program. So, as we move forward, let's look at some of those benefits. This is a timeline that we've gone through as a district. Initially, back in October of 2021, the discussions began. In November, December, Honor Community Health actually applied for a grant through Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and they were awarded that grant to support our district. And then, obviously, we've done some board presentations to keep the board informed in July. And now, currently, in August, we're going over kind of the specifics of the partnership. So, the purpose and the key intentions of the clinic with Oxford Community Schools is partially to create physical and psychological safety and well-being, coordinate purposeful efforts within and outside the district. Students 14 years old and older have the ability to self-refer and access outpatient mental health services. That's for a maximum of 12 sessions or four months of services. That's provided via the State of Michigan Mental Health Code. And the district... Our key intentions also include resource for underinsured and uninsured individuals in our community, as well as strengthening current practices and initiatives and coordination of care. Based on the Mental Health Code referenced, Honor Community Health Clinic will provide mental health services as outlined. However, they do not provide contraceptives, birth control, or referrals for adoption or abortion or reproductive health services. So, that is a question that came up, and we wanted to address that directly. What to expect? Oxford students, staff, and families and community can expect medical services, dental sealants, vision referrals, mental health services, and referrals. They can also expect direct care for high school staff and students, telehealth services and referrals for our community members, school-based health and mental health education opportunities, community-based education outreach, and coordination of care. Currently, the district does not have school nurses to provide many of these services. Honor Community Health can provide staff training for many of our student medical needs. Some of those specific areas where we would be able to provide training would include diabetes, epilepsy, administering EpiPens, things of that nature in our elementary schools and middle school, high school, for those students that require that. So, our staff at the clinic currently would include health educators, community health workers, as well as behavior health clinicians, nurse practitioner, and a medical assistant. Honor Community Health staff will be available to all Oxford Community Schools and provide health and wellness needs. They will be available for extracurricular activities and providing outreach and support in our community. As a quick note, our 22 spring surveys that we did for parents and guardians expressed when accessing supports, some of the top barriers included being unsure of what they needed, financial costs, and also wait lists in some of our community-based programs. So, to address that, we really want to look at some of these bullet points and increase the percent of students seen for health and wellness services, assess risk behaviors, and provide appropriate prevention and early intervention. And in order to keep our clinic informed and meeting the needs of the district, a key component is going to be our community advisory council, youth advisory council, and their involvement in identifying and addressing the needs, not only within the high school, but within our community. A couple of ways that we're going to maintain communication will be through board presentations such as this, community advisory council work, youth advisory council work, health education forums, as well as family education nights. Again, in our 2022 spring surveys, 79% to 80% of our parents and guardians expressed a moderate to high need for parent forums and community education programs. So, this can meet that need that our stakeholders express the desire for. Specific community outreach services initially because, as Mr. Weaver referenced, we will not have community members in the clinic. They will provide telehealth support and referrals for our community members that request services through the clinic. Those services will include medical, dental sealants, vision referrals, and mental health referrals. They will provide health education forums throughout the Oxford community, mental health resources and services. They will coordinate care for our constituents, as well as involvement in extracurricular events for additional support. They can provide assessment, prevention, and early intervention for our students as needed. Our next steps to advance the Honor Health Clinic partnership would be begin preparation of the clinic in office space, develop our advisory committees, which include parents, students, staff, and community members, and establish a clear process and procedures for students to access clinical services, for staff to refer students, staff and parents to refer students, for that matter, and document clinic utilization, and create the procedure for other district schools to request services from the clinic. With that, are there any questions?
The board? Dan?
Thank you. Couple questions. Is Honor Community Health, are they the healthcare provider? Or is there another layer to that? Is there like a Henry Ford Medical Center, Blue Cross Blue Shield? Who is the healthcare provider that this is?
Honor Community Health actually has a number of health clinics in various schools throughout the region. So, they actually bring their services. They actually hire. I am participating in that hiring process to make sure that any of those staff that I listed that would be engaged with our students and staff are a good fit with our district. However, they actually do the hiring, and they facilitate the services within the clinic.
Maybe I'll re... Because as my wife tells me, I don't always ask my questions appropriately the right way to her. So, they're the ones that are billing insurance companies. So, there is no... There's not another third party. Because one of the things that's really difficult is sometimes a parent may not know that their child has been... They have to sign off. But we get a lot of bills when we go to have a medical procedure done. And all of a sudden, you get a bill from this person, and that person, and another person over there. It's like, where are all these bills coming from? Is that comprised into one statement so that it can be easily identified?
So, Honor Community Health will do all the billing for those staff or students that have insurance. Those that are uninsured, they will manage to provide those services through other means. Ken, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, and just to clarify, I mean, the district gets... There's no financial benefit to the district. This is mainly... It is a medical, mental health, dental benefit to our school, and ultimately, to the school community and the community at large, especially through the telehealth. As well as for medical purposes, they... The parents need to approve that. The only thing that state law allows for a student to self-refer is the mental health visits. So, and that was at age 14. Then, they can go ahead if they feel like they're having some issues, and it's not being addressed. They can then refer to themselves, refer themselves to the clinic and start that process themselves. So, that is, in itself, is a great benefit to try to make sure that we're getting services to our kids.
Corey?
You said that there's no financial benefit to the school, but if they're using part of our space, is there a rent? Or is there a cost? Is there... How does that work?
No, we don't charge them rent. What we get back is in services. So, then, they help support our staff with trainings as far as... And also, going into classrooms and help support our staff with certain types of health portions of classes and so forth like that as well, too. So, what we get back for them using our space, and they, quite honestly, it's really seen as a community service, and it's supported through the grant. It's not something that really either side gets a great financial benefit from. It's really about bringing services into schools. And that is what this whole purpose of this grant is. It's a school-based grant. It has to be in a school. And therefore, especially with the ability, like we saw with the high school age, to be able to self-refer, that's one of the reasons why. As well as the fact that we had November 30 tragedy happen here, and they have a lot of resources to help with trauma and supporting kids as well, too, through that as well, that we felt this was the best location. Maybe we didn't pick the best, but there was other parameters that we had to deal with, such as if they were going to go to the outside. And we had to get that bid out to see if it was even possible to do. So, that's why I had to bring it to you first, before we went through all of that, to make sure you understood what was happening. And like you said, in the end, it became impractical. They, in talking to them, will be... Are willing to make just about any situation work that they can in the high school to help support our kids, our community, and be there to give them that benefit. But as far as like using or renting to them, it's really a mutual benefit. They are here to help service the kids and be able to do that. At the same time, we do get quite a bit of benefits as far as partnerships with them. Health support, like we said, we don't have nurses in our district. So, there's a lot of trainings that we can be able to have. If we have a health situation in a building, be able to get them over there to help out as well, too. So, that is also a huge benefit, as well as coordinating services and coordinating care closer with the school as well, and keeping our Easter Seals partnership as well going. So, that's the benefit, Mr. Bailey. But there hasn't been talk of rent.
Okay? Heather?
I just wanted to kind of make a general comment because I really wasn't on board with the location. I was on board with the thought of a community health program being brought to our students and our staff and our outside community as well. But I didn't love the location. And I had some conversations with Ken about it. And, you know, it's part of us getting on the other side of this. It's part of us providing another layer of mental health capabilities to provide to people, not only in our staff and in our students, but in our community. And so, you know, sometimes you have to change the lens that you look at things with. And this is another layer of mental health help that we can give. And so, you know, we are putting a lot of layers on, but that's what we need to do right now to move forward and try and get on the other side. So, I just kind of wanted to say that. And I also wanted to make a point, too, that there... You know, I know that there's some chatter that, you know, people wondering if we're trying to sneak in immunizations or a way to do vaccines or something like that. And the answer is no, that that will not be happening. There won't be any secretive immunizations or vaccines going on or anything like that. So, I just kind of wanted to stand and say that as well.
Thank you, Heather. Dan?
Thank you. I, too. The timeline, the timing, and the location. Is there... Are there other opportunities within the building? Can you help us understand what other ideas in this building would work with this or what they're had planned?
So, with them not doing the telehealth, and I talked with Mrs. Thomas, who is the CEO of Honor Community Health. And with them doing the telehealth, we have much more flexibility. So, we don't have to worry about... Because we were trying to make sure that if it was to be accessed to the outside, that's why that location was chosen, that it would be discreet and still be able to be secure and so forth in the end. With not having the telehealth, and I've already talked to her about, hey, we may have to go more years than just one with the telehealth until the community is ready as well for that to happen. And that may not happen. So, I said, are you still willing to partner with us? So, we're still working through that. But at that point, that frees up. With not having to do the... With having the community come into the building, it does free up, and we can look at other areas. That was already a area, a room, that was being used as a classroom. So, from the outside, it would still appear the same. But I also understand the idea and the sensitivity. And if we'll go back to using that as a classroom, that area, and then, we can find another location in the building and start that process as well. And that's what I'm really asking for tonight, is to continue to get... To have your support, to continue to look for a way in which we can make this partnership work. I think the resources that it brings to the kids, the school community, if we can solve the issues that have been raised, which is basically the outside access, which that one has been solved, you know, and the location. I mean, it just offers too much for us not to try to pursue it.
Dan?
I wholeheartedly agree. I don't believe that we should turn down an offer to help. We need it. Our community needs it. Our students need it. So, if we can somehow figure out a way to make it work in the building so that there is access, although it's more limited than what we originally thought, I'm happy that we're at least reconsidering another way of doing it.
Yeah, Honor Health has been great with that and trying to figure out. I mean, their main goal is to help support us and to help us with these services and to be able to supply them to the community. And make sure that, you know, as well, too, a big part of this is making sure uninsured or underinsured individuals are able to get access and to have that support, as well as, like I said, the other aspects of educational support and support that they will bring all of the staff as well, too, and being able to integrate some of that. Plus, as well, quite honestly, you know, down the road, they may be able to have some educational partnerships because we have a great health services program that we might be able to help out. If that as well, too. But in the end, it's got to work for everybody, and that's what we've been working at. And that's part of this process, is, you know, trying to vet things out and trying to approach it and see if it's something that people would understand and be able to support and get behind it as it brings these resources to our community and our school system that I think would greatly enhance and help her recovery.
Couple questions. How much is the grant?
That part, I don't know because we do not benefit from the grant, actually.
Who manages the grant?
The Honor Community Health and MDHHS.
So, Sam won't be having to add this to his responsibilities. And is this a one-year grant or is this a multiple-year grant?
It's a one-year grant with renewal, so...
Possible renewal. But they manage the monies. They report back to the state, not us.
Yes, no.
Thank you.
Our financial commitment would have been in the construction costs of facilitating the clinic. And if we're putting that off for the time being, then, yeah, we will not incur any financial expenses.
Or not many, because we will maybe have to help to try to make... You know, whatever room we end up with, we'll try to, through screening, through other things. And we may have to end up helping with that. Because part of the grant does cover furniture and some other things, but we may have to help them with that. But they are willing to figure out that piece, even to figure out how to make sure that they're able to carry out safely and successfully medical practices there. And that means just basically, if a kid has a cold and the parent has agreed that, hey, they can see the... Go down to the clinic, the Honor Community Health Clinic. And like I said, they would sign off on it. Then, they can go down, and they'd be able to take a pill, for example, for lack of any better example.
All right. Tanne's got another question.
One more question.
Dan?
Ken touched on it. The parent needs to agree for their student, if they're under 18, or any student.
Well, Eddie?
At 18, students start to become an adult. I mean, we always work with the parent still, legally, I should say. Yes, but under 18, the parent would certainly... Over 18, we still usually, unless they sign a form in the main office and so forth, we still work with the parent on all of that, unless there's difficulties. But yes, for medical, any type of medical services, visiting them medically for any type, that would have to be okay, approved by the parent. And for high school students, we would have, in the registration packet, a form that they would sign and say, it is okay for my child if they want. And then, of course, at the same time, then, the clinic would help to keep the parents informed as to why they were there on that. The only thing they can go see the clinic for on their own without parent is for mental services, and they can only do that for 12 visits. Within, I think, it's four months is the way the state... And that's the Michigan state law.
Any other comments or questions? Mary?
Thank you. In rolling out the services, is that something that Honor does? Is it something that we will be doing, like sending emails when these things open up? Is the promotion done through Honor? Is a promotion done through us? Because this isn't the first time, you know, that Honor's done this. So, which is helpful also because they're already working in schools. This is what they do. I'm curious about how do we get the word out when services do become available?
Yeah, it's entirely collaborative. But we've had some of those discussions where they will actually go out into some of our community centers and provide informational sessions and promote the services that are being provided, key areas, some of our elementary schools. And we've discussed being able to promote that through some of our newsletters and things of that nature. But yeah, we will do that collaboratively as a partnership.
I will add that I really... I appreciate having... Being able to have services like this available for our students and families. It's very challenging to receive health services, let alone behavioral health services, when you don't have insurance and you don't have the cash to pay a therapist on an hourly basis. It's very, very challenging. So, I really appreciate this, and I hope people take advantage of it. It's here for our community.
Last thing I would like to, you know, really bring out, too, as well, that really sparked our attention and thought as well, too, is there's this... The component of the advisory boards. Do you want to just kind of reiterate that a little bit, Mr. Barless, as far as the two advisory boards with the students and then, community?
Well, we'll be developing advisory committees, and that's one of the first things that we would do as part of this partnership. And that's... Will include students, staff, parents, and community members. And so, as we develop those advisory committees, they really drive what the needs are as a result of the clinic. The one thing that was really mentioned is the convenience of parents not having to take time off work to take their child to and from, perhaps appointments. And that child, you know, the parent consents, and then, that child has access to services right here at the school. Or they can go to the elementary schools and whatnot, too. So, that particular convenience with trying to coordinate appointments and whatnot for your children was a benefit that they've seen in other clinics and other communities.
Please, go ahead.
That brings up another question. Something we have a lot of around here is sports physicals. I wouldn't... That's... It's quite overwhelming for them to be doing that just out of there. But would that be something that they would maybe coordinate to make that easier for our families?
Well, they've committed to coordinating care and services, and they will have a nurse practitioner onsite. And I believe nurse practitioners are able to do sports physicals. So, we'd have to clarify how that would work.
I just wouldn't want to overwhelm them either because, you know, when every season starts, you got a whole lot of students needing physicals. So, just something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would someone like to put this motion on the floor, then? Thank you for the presentation. Someone? Heather?
Move to support the inter-agency agreement between Honor Community Health and Oxford Community Schools.
Is there support? Mary, support? Any further discussion? Corey?
I'm still kind of nervous on this one. With recent events, we're now bringing more people into our school. Security is obviously a first concern. The other driver for this, for me, is we've got a lot of small family operations in Oxford that do this care that we're now going to compete against, and we're doing it, providing them no overhead, rent, or anything like that. These are the families that support our schools, support our sports teams, support our kids, and now, we're going to be a competition to them. I'm not in favor of that.
So, to hear what you're saying, what you're saying is...
We're putting a clinic in, and we're going to be taking business away from family dentistry, family clinics, family counseling. We just had a new clinic open up on the north side of Oxford. They have to pay rent. They pay overhead. And we're now giving a clinic free rent, free everything. I just... I think we're taking business away from the families that support our school.
All right, thank you for sharing that. Dan?
Should it be something to be considered that there be a partnership with those who are in the community that want to participate? Their services? I don't know if Honor Community would allow that. But if that's an opportunity, then I think it's at least worth having that conversation because without a doubt, that is something that we need to consider. But it's up for... We have to have some sort of framework around that, if that's even worth the conversation with them that they even want to have with us.
So, Dan, to clarify, are you suggesting that maybe we would go back to this?
So, so Dan, to clarify, are you suggesting that maybe we would go back to this, this um Honor Health and, and, and share that concern and see what type of partnership they could make with?
Sure, because if they're going to be hiring, if they're going to be hiring people to staff this, I, why could, could it be a consideration that they hire somebody from one of our local doctor's office or dentist's office? Um again, I, I don't get into the, the making of the cake, but it seems that we're, it would be at least worth asking that question.
Mr. Bayless, you've, this is a legitimate question and, and you have some history of knowing that this has occurred in other places in other towns in our area. Um how have they addressed this concern? Because we certainly don't want to do damage to businesses that currently exist, so do you have any examples of maybe, what towns, what cities already have these in place maybe? And help us understand what they're doing?
I, coming in, given the timing of it, I haven't visited the other schools with the health clinics.
Okay.
Um I believe Mr. Weaver and maybe a couple of, other of our staff members have. However, I can speak to the fact that they rely heavily on referring students and staff and family members out into the community as well. So they utilize the community-based resources and um the, the um staff that they've been interviewing and received applicants for as far as for the clinic positions have actually been local individuals that are applying to be part of this work in our schools and, and supporting our students and our, our families. So um they're local individuals that they're trying to staff the clinic with currently. Um I know that doesn't address your concerns specifically Cory, um but yeah, they do, they, referrals are a large part of it's, they're minimally staffed and they do utilize that referrals in, within the community extensively, so.
Thank you for that, thank you. Uh yes, Dan?
I, 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 I believe that there can be, we, we need to investigate the referral process out to those. Because they're not going to be able to do everything here, let's face it. They're, they're only going to be able to handle them, especially if we're going to scale it down initially. They're not going to be able to do um a, a, a list of things. I mean, they're not going to be able to do fillings and, and as, as a dentist, they're going to be able to say, boy, you, you really need to go get that checked out. And then that's the opportunity to partner with the local businesses. Maybe we throw that out to the local businesses and say, this is what we're looking for, would you want to be part of this program? That to me is a very, very strong possibility in my mind to work.
Yeah, I would need, I think we would want to know that that's a reality, not just, just something that we're conjecturing on.
Correct.
Does, does it seem to make sense to all of you that, I don't know, given Cory's concerns and some of my own and what you've brought up, to have someone from Honor Community come to us and talk to us, specifically them?
That would be very welcomed.
So that we can ask them these questions. So then I, I would, if, if that's how a majority are feeling, I would recommend that we table the motion. And we ask at our next board meeting for someone from Honor Community to come so that we can hear some more from our community and ask some more questions. We want to do something good, but we don't want the good to harm someone, right? And so.
The unintended consequence.
Let's look into it.
Is, is something that we need to dive deeper into, so I think if we're going to table it, we need to have a vote.
Yep.
See where that vote goes and then go that way.
Table it and then vote?
No.
No, you got to vote.
Vote and then, see, so we've already had discussion, we had a motion, support.
Any more, any more? Any more discussion on the topic? All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? No? All right. So um our recommendation, Ken, is to um let's, let's garner some more questions and, and from, from the community, get some more input. And let's have somebody from Honor Community come and address some of these questions and concerns directly.
Sure, we can do that, not a problem.
Thank you very much. Yes, please?
Not to take this off of anybody in cabinet's responsibility, but as they come, that, before they have a huge discussion with cabinet and Ken and my, my guess is they're, they're working pretty hard to get to the beginning of school. I think that conversation needs to happen directly to us, Ken sets that up and we have it at a board meeting instead of
Yes.
intermediary between, well, this is what they said and here is that and.
My understanding that you want it at the board meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you everyone. All right, we'll move on to four B, three-year plan presentation. Hello Anita.
Hi. Are you coming down here or are you going?
I'll do it from up here actually, I can see the.
Okay, I'll be the clicker.
Yes, you'll have to be the clicker. All right, so over the summer after, after uh the school year ended, we, as cabinet began to work on what we had discussed as a, a three-year plan for going forward. Um and I want to first just, first go over, if you want to hit the clicker, that tonight is, it's an initial tentative plan. We are getting board feedback tonight. Um we are sharing our thinking and vision tonight, uh and really it's about getting your feedback um and collecting that. And then also as well, uh we will be looking at going forward with having a town hall uh next week. Uh so that the community can hear the plan, read over the plan and stuff, and then eventually through the month of September, uh we'll have listening circles, uh forums to, to, to hear the community, uh and then come back and share updates in October. That this document is really a living, breathing plan um that will be uh amenable or changeable as we go along as to serve the needs. Uh which if you want to go ahead and hit the next. As you can see, some of the, our key intentions is to restore the physical and psychological safety and well-being. I'm not going to read all of these, but make sure we reclaim our school district and community, uh create a cohesive approach to uh engagement with stakeholders, uh and continue to learn and make ongoing revisions for growth. We've had quite a bit of collaboration already. Uh one of the things that we learned over the summer, and I think we learned it pretty quick, is we were looking at first bringing back a lot of staff members, uh trying to bring in uh families and so forth, and then over the summer, we realized that probably some of the best therapy that most of the staff and students and family needed was to uh, to have a summer and to enjoy. And so uh we partnered with National Center for School Safety. Um and uh they were very uh helpful as we move forward with that partnership. We have met with them, I don't know, seven or eight times, they reviewed, uh gave us suggestions, put comments all over. We were working through a Google Doc together, uh and uh they were, there was uh mainly uh about three of them that helped from the National Center. And that is an ongoing partnership that we are continuing to this day and will have that partnership going forward as well too. Um also as well too, we've had other partners that we, as we've gone through with like the security, um schools that we've consulted, as you can see on here as well too, and gone back to, as well as the data, as you will see, was heavily relied on to drive the uh three-year plan. Uh from this, what to expect from the plan, you can will see that it is an evolving plan. It will continue to gather input, uh it will be based off of evidence-based strategies, opportunities for collaboration and feedback. Um eventually, there will be the identification of specific objectives to measure the plan's progress and we'll do that through community and, or committee, I should say, input um as well to set those target areas for those different areas and updates at board meetings. Now as we go, one of the purposes of this, this plan, um you know, we, and talking through uh with National Center for uh school safety and that, uh in talking and then us talking about how you create this environment at a school. You know, we really looked at, you know, building security, assessment and response, school climate and supportive learning and working environment. And then we've ultimately ended up breaking that down into five areas. But those areas really then lead to physi- physical and psychological safety and positive youth development. So, and then we have, uh we came into our measurables and outcomes. And then this is what we were really looking for because we set up the five areas of mental health, uh safety and security first, mental health. Um also looking at uh social emotional learning, looking at staff wellness and retention, as well as community and government outreach and trying to partner with that. Um.
Whoever is doing tech, we're getting messages that the live stream has no sound. Can someone in the tech area address that? Is anybody in the tech area still here?
Where's our sign language teacher when we need her? Now, he was just over there.
Can, Danny, would you do me a favor to see if he's in the, in the, in the um lobby?
OCTV, are you picking it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you picking it up in your ear?
Yeah, no, not, not through him. I had it, but not through him.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, what? They said there's some. Okay, all right, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I've got a couple of messages if there's any sound.
All right, and so on this slide here, and this is really the idea behind the plan is to set the stage uh to reestablish our academic expectations and to be able to, through the school improvement process, then work, coupled along with these, the work in this five areas, to eventually uh push through students forward as they, uh we look to reestablish our expectations for our students and our staff and trying, you know, they've really had, they've had three years of interrupted education, uh in trying to uh push them forward. We've done a, a pretty good job with, with uh having summer school opportunities. Uh at the secondary level though, you know, a lot of times um they work, they have other obligations and so forth. And so summer school doesn't tend to be uh as engaging, but the elementary has had very high levels. We tr- we also held this summer quite a few SEL activities this summer where we had just activities and we had some par- parent partners that did a great job with us as well. So we're trying to really set that stage to then bring back the academics and the academic is, established that as we go through for the school improvement process. And you can see here where we're looking at and what the committees will do, each of the five areas will have a committee as well too. And will, parents will be on that, students will be on that, as well as we'll have staff on that. And we are going to invite a board member to be on each of the committees as well too. Uh and they will really work to set the measurables and the expectations in each area as we go along. And as we come back to you, we'll have that um, those measurables for you. Uh rather than us setting at a cabinet, um those arbitrary expectations or outcomes. So that does uh once again bring back us to, to the uh opportunities for community involvement in the plan. First of all, we'll be hearing it tonight uh as well. We have the town hall and then we end up with the committee work, uh listening circles and family education nights as well that, as will be planned as we go along throughout this uh school year. And especially the first semester as we go along, bringing that feedback back to the board, integrating it into the plan as we can. And like I said, setting those measurables and outcomes as well too. Um at this point, here's the basic setup of the plan. You'll see on the, at the top of, so this is just an example, social emotional learning, we have, that's the overall goal area. Um then we have on the side, you'll see the goals, you'll see the headings at the top. That is probably the most important thing for you to look at as you're going through the plan. Uh goals, you have a purpose, action steps and strategies, uh where we're currently. Implementation evidence that we see will be available to see that it's been implemented, as well as staff training and professional learning that we'll have to take into account, as well as then communication for all stakeholders. Uh like I said, as we go along, you will also eventually see that each of them have a goal of involving stakeholders. And that will also involve, like I said, setting the, trying to guiding you being used as a think tank, as well as setting uh measurables or outcomes for the different areas.
So I just want to clarify that uh this presentation is not the plan. The plan is actually about a twenty-two page document. And each section looks like, like this, so um you've received that in your board packet or possibly an eleven by seventeen um packet, really big packet. Um so we just wanted to make sure that everybody saw the um actual layout of the plan. Then we will be posting a draft um on our website once we're able to move forward so that it's accessible to our community. But this is just an example of the actual twenty-two page layout of the plan. And also if I may, our um collaborators from the National Center of School Safety are here with us. So I wanted to make sure that we said hi to, to Heather and Emily. Thank you so much for driving um from Ann Arbor. I don't know if they want to wave or not, but.
Where are they?
Their collaboration and their, um their collaboration pushing on our thinking and helping us to see, see things from different perspective has been like invaluable um to us, so thank you both for coming. So we're going to turn it over to.
Thank you for that clarification, Nadia.
Sure.
Can I say something?
No, no.
Say it again. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hi, good evening. So I am honored tonight to share with you the safety and security aspect, the section of our three-year plan. Um as you know, we did some spring surveys and I did want to share with you that thirty-four percent of students agreed um or strongly agreed that they felt safe in Oxford schools with thirty-seven percent being unsure. That sort of guided our work. Um we're looking to sort of parallel both felt safety or their perceptions of safety with the reality and the security of, of the buildings. Um and trying to make sure that those align. My children are safe in Oxford schools, fifty-nine percent of parents agreed or strongly agreed with that, again with twenty-three percent unsure. And that's just a snapshot of some of the many data points that we use when creating the safety plan. And before I dive into the safety updates, um I just really want to thank Secure Education Consultants has continued to help with our, and our ongoing review of our safety measures. We have our safety committee that is made up of Oakland County Sheriff's Department, uh Oxford Fire, Oxford Village Management and many others in the community. Um we also have a parent group that has met and we've had now two meetings and they have been fantastic. Um and I really want to thank Heather Schaefer has been involved in the committee, um the subcommittee as well. So we have had some board involvement, so just wanted to share that. So thank you to all those people who've helped to create um this part of the plan alongside me. Okay, our first goal for safety and security to be creating a physically safe school environment. Um obviously, students are going to learn and, and be able to focus better if they do feel safe and they are in fact in a safe and secure environment. And some of those action steps we've taken or are in the process of taking, we will be installing the Evolve Weapons Detection kiosks at our three entrances for use at the high school. Um we do have those as part of a free trial with the Evolve company, so we're very grateful for their partnership. That's through their charitable organization called Give Evolve. And those are going to be delivered August eighteenth to the high school. I do want to mention, um we're working on a, an opportunity for parents to come in as sort of an open house type environment to come and see the machines and see how they work and, and all, other safety measures and other aspects of the plan to talk it through um during that open house. So we'll have more information about that taking place August nineteenth uh in the future. But um we do have a weapons detection dog, so our high school lead security officer will be the handler for Daisy. She is a lab retriever and she's currently in uh Texas getting trained. Mr. Rourke will join her down there for training later on in um early September and be back with her in mid-September to the district. And she'll be here at the high school. We do have a private security company, we're going to continue to use ESS services. We'll have armed guards at the elementary schools, the virtual academy and four additional officers here at the high school. And as well as um we will have the afternoons gentlemen will be working here at the high school too as a, a guard from the, for the two to ten PM shift. Our digital ID readers have come in and we're in the process of installing them. Those do speak to our school gate guardian, which is already in usage in each of our front office areas. And so when students come in in the morning, they will have to scan the barcode on their ID cards. And then if a student is, let's say, expelled or um And then if a student is, let's say, expelled or, um, suspended or has any kind of disciplinary issue, we can program it so that when they do get scanned, it alerts the staff or, you know, in some way identifies them as someone who should not be in the building. That was a feature that was imperative for us as we chose, um, which program to work with. We do have a school, a second school resource officer. Uh, he is already in employment. And, uh, we have one at the middle school and one at the high school now. Zero-Eyes weapons detection software is currently on 30 of our cameras here at the high school. We will be expanding that, um, actually next week to closer to 80 or 100 cameras. The, the shape and the type of hallways that we have sort of dictates the, the strategy of placement for those, um. So we already have about 187 cameras in the high school. And we have to determine strategically which views we need necessary to, uh, alert for weapons detection. So not every single camera, but probably, you know, somewhere around half of those cameras will have the software when all is said and done. Nightlock, which is a company we use for the door locking devices, was gracious enough to offer us, um, safety shades to put over the window panes, over classroom doors and other spaces. They have provided those at no cost to us if they were standard sized and we are paying for those that are special order. So those are in the process right now and that's district-wide of being installed. Um, hopeful to have that probably mid to late September project completion. Uh, I've come to you before about our AED fleet. I did want to highlight that again. Our AEDs across the district are new and in great working order. We have a fantastic relationship with the Oxford Fire Department who recently provided CPR and AED training again to our entire administrative staff. We're on a two-year cycle so that all of our administrators have that training every two years. And we have, as long as we maintain at least 10% of our staff, right now we're closer to 15 or 20% of our staff being trained and active, active, um, in their certification, we can continue this My Heart Safe School certification, which is really, um, quite phenomenal. It shows our commitment to safety. It's something that only, you know, a few schools in Michigan are able to have that designation. And all of our elementaries, our virtual academy lab and our middle school and high school have it now. So very proud of that. They do an annual, um, AED drill with their office, front office, uh, emergency team to maintain that as well. We are going to continue using clear backpacks, uh, at the secondary level. So that's Bridges, uh, the virtual academy lab, high school and middle school. That is really more of a felt safety or perception of safety item. As our students told us in the survey data, they wanted to continue that. So somewhere close to 600 high school students took the survey and I believe it was 63% wanted to maintain clear backpacks. So we are going to do that, um, even with the Evolve system. That's something to keep looking at and maybe talk to the students once they have the weapons detection kiosks and sort of get a feel for how they're feeling maybe, uh, later in the fall or early winter. And we have partnered with Secure Education Consultants and they will be performing those critical building assessments on an annual basis. So we did have a critical building assessment district-wide in December. That will happen again, uh, on an annual cycle. Do you have any questions about this piece before I move on to the next goal?
Dan?
Sorry Jill, I have a few. First, you mentioned the shades. Are they always down or can they be put up, down however we need them to be? Are they put down for, uh, explain how those shades.
Our best practice is to keep those up at all times. They will only be down during lockdowns. So we do want to be able to see into classrooms for child safety as a general rule.
Absolutely, thank you. There is a, um, I'm just looking at the latest survey that you have here. 37% unsure, 30% of students strong, agree or strongly agree that they feel safe in high school. Whom we're partnering with, do they have recommendations for improvements for that? To make them feel, or is it just in the body of what we're doing that organically it happens?
Yeah, I don't think we, in my work, I didn't specifically address the perceptions of safety. That was more so in the work of the, uh, social emotional learning and things of that, mental health support. But I think as a byproduct, them being safer and seeing these security updates, I'm hopeful that they will in fact feel safer as well. Right? And we are taking, um, the suggestions of Secure Education Consultants to make specific improvements.
And then one more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do we have a photo? And I was out of town when, when we had the Evolve equipment here. Do we, do we have a photo of what the Evolve equipment looks like? Or maybe you can just explain it. I'm, I'm, I need to get a picture in my mind of what it looks like. Is, is it like a typical, um, detection system or explain to me?
So it's a kiosk that's about five feet from, from tower to tower. It does have a enclosure, uh, over the head. Um, I'm sorry, it does not have an enclosure over the head is what I was trying to say. And you walk through it at the pace of life, they say, so you're not stopping to empty your pockets. Unlike a metal detector, it's not treating you as though you are a criminal. You're assumed to be innocent and to have nothing on your person unless it alerts. Only those students who have an alert based on the shape of an item that's in their, you know, in their bag or in their pocket or out in the open, it's looking at the shape of the item based on artificial intelligence. And if they do in fact alert the system, then they go to a secondary search area.
Is it best practices to tell the community what those shapes that could trigger? Or is it?
No.
No.
But I will, I will mention, um, some items that do cause false alarms. And so students will quickly learn, oh man, my water bottle. We noticed some of the shapes of certain water bottles mimic, um, rifle parts. Cause it's looking for parts and pieces of a weapon, not just guns. And so they'll know, maybe I need to take my water bottle out and put it aside when I walk through. Um, and umbrellas also happened just to have, we noticed that some of the instrument cases for band alerted the system just because of the, the shapes of some of the metal in the, in the actual case. But I'd rather not go into further detail than that.
No, and I, I, I only bring that up because I think it's important that everybody understand that there is going to be some understanding that your student may be said, we need to take a look at your bag, we need to take a look at this. It's not because, like you said, they're, they're presumed innocent until, uh, so I just, I want everybody to be prepared for that because the minute somebody gets questioned, it's all, what do you, you know, I just.
It's not a metal detector, it's a weapons detection kiosk. So it's, it's different.
It's different. Um, we're looking, we're looking at putting our logo on it to make it just, you know, look a little bit more culture and climate friendly. Um, but I did want to mention, it takes a, a quick snapshot if it alerts as you're going through. And I've been asked by a few folks and I want to make, make it very clear, it does not maintain that data. No student information or faces or anything like that are being stored anywhere besides right here at the high school. Um, and it in no way does facial recognition or anything like that. So I was asked that question a lot, um, out in the community. I wanted to make that known.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else have anything?
Yeah, one question.
Please.
When we, and I know this is kind of a loaded question, but when we talk about the 34% of students agree, 59% of parents, do we have any idea of how many parents and students actually took this survey?
We do know. It's close to 600 high school students. Off the top of my head, I don't recall the number of parents. I don't know if any of my cabinet members remember. Yeah, I don't have it handy. Um, we, we can give you an exact number, Mr. Bailey.
It's more of a.
Yeah.
When there's surveys, we really need you to do them.
Yeah.
I have a question about Zero-Eye. If it detects something, who does it talk to?
Great question. So it is an immediate through rapid SOS, it goes immediately to our 911 dispatch center. And they've been heavily involved in our testing. So that was probably what impressed us the most about that particular product over some of the other, uh, folks in that same security space, is that they can speak immediately to, um, our dispatch center. So not only dispatch, but also locally, I will get it, um, you know, whoever we identify within the app is getting our school resource officer, the high school administrator, things like that, but also first responders instantaneously.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else? Heather?
I, I, I just wanted to make a comment too about, um, about Daisy, the dog. So there was a lot of, um, I think when, when, um, the Attorney General Dana Nessel came, she offered to give us a dog. Um, she offered to give us a dog through a very specific program that was three and a half times what we had already committed to prior to her offer. Um, and then after her offer, when we did reach out to her and ask her if she would be willing to take some of the compensation she was going to use to buy that dog to help us, um, facilitate the training and, and things that we would need for Daisy. There was no response. So I, I just wanted to kind of clarify that because there, there was, um, you know, a lot of talk about that. Why didn't we get her dog? Why did we go and find our own dog? We had already actually found our dog and committed to it. When you commit to a breeder for a special needs dog like this, it's like that, once that motion kind of starts going, you have to kind of stay on that train. Um, and Jim had already made some personal commitments as well to be the handler of that dog. So there was a lot of things in motion and then she went, of course, on the news and offered to do that at three and a half times the cost. So, um, I just wanted to point a couple of those things out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mary?
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Lomond. I appreciate the detail. The, um, when we're talking about the, uh, Evolve program, this is going to be for, um, the beginning of the school day, correct?
It is going to, we're going to maintain operation of only one door like we did all last year throughout the school day. So we have approximately 100 students, staff, parents, community members who come in and out of the school throughout the school day after we begin classes. And it will also be used at that one door, at that one entrance during that as well. It's staffed by an ESS, um, guard.
Okay, that was the second part of the question is that it has to be staffed by somebody. Regarding the, uh, digital ID readers, is that, that will be for after, when the, after the main doors close, after everybody comes in?
No, that's for every person walking in the building.
So every student is going to be scanning their card as they walk in to the building?
Right now, it's looking like they're going to do it before they get into the Evolve kiosk. I'm going to wait till the kiosk gets here to make sure we don't change the order of that. But I think, um, logistically, they're going to do the ID and then enter the kiosk.
Okay. So, and just another, as we were talking about maybe some of the false alarms with the Evolve, um, you can't leave your, you can't leave your ID at home.
Yep. We will have access to Power School. I mean, I don't want to offer students an out, but I'd like them to have their IDs. But we would also have access to Power School, you know, if the student didn't have their ID one day where we could pull them up one by one. That's just not a very time efficient way of doing entry.
We're going to be, and, and we've seen these, um, systems work that we'll be able to work them together so the students aren't standing outside and.
That is the, that is the hope. So originally we were going to go with dual lane Evolve kiosks and we actually, after we did the trial, realized we only needed the single lane because of our traffic. So if we have about 1,750 students coming through in the morning through three entrances, not exactly evenly split, but let's say so. So we're talking about, you know, 500 to 600 students at each of the three entrances. It's plenty of time for them to get through at that pace of life, if you will. But we are not wanting to create a large group of students waiting outdoors. That's also unsafe. So that's on our minds.
Do you want to comment too Jill about, um, just so the parents can hear, um, to tell their kids what to do with athletic bags and band instruments?
Yep, we are going to allow those through the system in the morning, so those will not be clear. But then immediately after leaving the kiosk, they have to go to either the locker room or the, uh, band hallway to, to put in their band locker. There are not going to be any bags that are not clear in the academic hallways. And so all of our security will be trained on that. They can only go right to the area where they're putting their bag. And those bags will go through the Evolve system and be searched if they do alert it. So that's sort of like one, one small baby step away from the clear backpacks, if you will. But we're going to see how it feels and, and, and how frequently it alerts and see if we want to maintain that practice. We were using a lot of staff to move bags and to handle bags at the end of the school year. Um, so that was some of the feedback we got from staff. It was exhausting. And now I'm hopeful that this is a safe way to alleviate that staffing need.
Any other comments or questions? Anything else? All right, I think we can continue.
I just, I had, I had one more comment. These, these programs, we can benefit from these programs as long as, um, as long as we do what we're supposed to do. So that when students are leaving or adults are leaving the buildings, that they don't hold the door open for the next person. That, um, and we have more, we have more people watching these areas, but you know, it's just like the open doors in the classrooms. You know, it's because people are actually doing those things. We have all the, we're putting all these security measures in place, but we need to be sure that each of us are doing our parts too.
Absolutely.
You know, and letting the people know, no, I can't let you just walk in, you have to buzz in, you have to call the office. No, I can't.
Training is going to be a, a big piece of this. Um, and just to skip ahead, so if you look at C on the next goal, enhanced Alice training and drills, it's not just Alice that we're doing, but also training on the, the actual systems that are in place. And, and that includes not propping doors, not, um, allowing, you know, others in the building and forcing them to go through the building entry procedures, requiring staff to go through systems depending on the time of day. So yeah, that's a big piece of it. Thank you.
Didn't mean to jump ahead.
No. So for goal two, refining our safety procedures and communication specifically, um, we are going to refresh staff, A, on our safety procedures and communication. We do have the four-digit emergency codes at each of our buildings. And so those are on every phone or will be before school begins, the specific code. So in, in different buildings, you can dial four digits and it will dial not only one singular phone in the, in the front office, but in most cases, five, six, up to seven or eight phones, so that you don't have to guess who might be sitting at their desk if there's an emergency. You call everybody in the front office if it's, if necessary. And on our caller ID, it actually says emergency line. So everyone knows it, something is happening. We have that at the district level as well. If they call over to central office, it pops up and says emergency, um, from one of the buildings. So we just wanted to make sure everyone knew about that number and was able to utilize it quickly in the event of an emergency. It's going to be on each phone, so there's no, no need for memory there. Um, also for PA announcements, we want to empower anyone to put us into a lockdown or to give information, um, related to, uh, an emergency. So there are codes in each of the building that are again, building specific. Um, that's just, we inherited that system, but where you can dial and it goes over the overhead speaker to all speakers in the building. We want every teacher and staff member to know how to utilize that as well. Um, our, our, our audio visual mass notification system I'll be bringing to you later in the agenda this evening because we do have a small change order for it. I can get into that later. But for the time being, we are working on the high school and the middle school. Those should be done. We've been pushed back a little bit to probably early to mid-September based on just the items. So our folks have been in the buildings, they've been working very hard and we're missing some of the actual hardware. So they're bartering with other, um, other agencies and trying to borrow in the meantime to get our beacons up. But when school begins, we will have the alarm beacons in all of our main corridors and our main, our large group settings, our offices and things like that. They just won't be in the classrooms yet. That's the, the way we ask them to proceed. Um, and those will be like amber, amber colored alert along with the, the noise. Yep.
If, when we put these in, I, you're saying that they'll be in when? Do you, do they estimate?
When school begins, we're going to have it in all the corridors and hallways at the middle school and the high school. But probably not until mid, till mid-September, hopefully early, but let's say mid-September to get it in all the classrooms.
Okay, and when it is, when it is installed, I, I would like to see it working in all the different phases of the building that they're in. I want to make sure that it works the way that it's intended to work in all areas of the building so that we know that there's not going to be a surprise, um, or a question of if we have a, a, a drill and somebody in the far corridor of the building doesn't hear it, we want to make sure that that is done. And I have every, um, confidence that you will make that happen. Um, but I also would like to see that as well.
Absolutely. Yep, I'll be part of our testing. Um, we are doing enhanced Alice training and drills and we talked a lot about this at the safety committee and the safety subcommittee, the parents' concerns about returning to drills. Again, felt safety, our students will feel safer if they're prepared for an emergency and we have a legal obligation to perform a certain number of drills each year. So we will have to return to those this year, but we're going to make sure we include the parent community and let them know well in advance of those drills and, and probably we'll do them in either a tabletop fashion at first or virtual or some way to more sensitively, you know, return to those drills as opposed to just having a live action drill right out, right out the gate. Um, so we are talking with some mental health professionals to make sure we return to drills in a, in a very sensitive way. So more on that before we drill, uh, will, will come out. Additional threat assessment training, we are always undergoing, you know, ongoing training as educators. We did have threat assessment training again as recently as today, um, at our high school. The, the middle school will be going through it on Friday and, um, it's ongoing. So I just wanted to mention that. We are constantly looking at our processes and procedures related to threat assessment in that Form 8400 that I've brought to you folks probably too many times in the past, so. Electronic student monitoring software, both the Go Guardian and the Gaggle alerts will continue next year. We, we continued both of those contracts. I don't need to get into detail. I think I've explained those. One, one is when they're outgoing messages and, and data and one is incoming messages and data on student accounts. Our signs on interior and exterior doors, we know those are very important, especially for folks who are not very familiar with the building, to be able to come to the buildings and know exactly which doors have controlled access to get in. So those have a key if you look outside. And then also what the door number is to communicate with other first responders. We were in the process of doing that at each of our buildings, new uniform signs that are blue and gold right before COVID hit. And then during COVID, and we've slowly been kind of been limping along and getting products, during product shortages. Those should be done any day. So I'm hopeful those will be done by the end of August, certainly by the return to school at each of our buildings. We are updating our radio system to enhance the communication between all of our schools. I wish Sasha was here to better explain the tech behind it, but it's very intricate and involved. And we'll make sure that our radios at the middle school and the high school specifically can interact with one another at all times, was the intention of this. And we're also trying to make sure Leonard is not left out there on a different sort of channel. So because of the distance factor, we have to be a little creative, but I think we're gonna be able to get Leonard tied in to our new system. And then Okay to Say continues, but we want to really push the awareness feature. Want to talk with parents about getting the app downloaded on their students' phones, make sure parents know how to utilize it. That may be part of the open house education piece. And including this Okay to Say content in mentor periods or during advisory classes for students. So it's a language we're all speaking and aware of.
Mary?
Thank you. What are, what processes or procedures are we putting in place for subs who are coming into the building? To make sure that they are up to date on all of these procedures and people aren't just getting, and so people have their proper training.
Yep. So our subs must complete the Alice training and also the Stop the Bleed training when they're onboarding. And then as part of, part of a folder in each of the front offices, they're given a bunch of emergency information so that they are armed with that information when they go into the classroom as well. So we've included them in, in the basic training. But I think when they come in each office, many of the same subs come to the same buildings and have a relationship with the front office staff. But they are gonna be reviewing at the beginning of the school year, those sub folders at each school that have those emergency procedures.
Anyone else? All right.
And the final goal I've sort of spoken about already, which is to make sure that we're reflecting the needs of the community and constantly, you know, not only promoting the transparency of it, but then asking for, for feedback on the safety and security plan. And ways we might do that include board members, staff, parents and students. We have some ways to do that. I want to include more staff. Right now, we don't have any staff on the subcommittee beyond our administrative staff. And so some of the feedback I got was to find a way to reach out to teachers. So I'll be challenged with that this fall and, and we'll find a way to make sure I have a teacher voice in all of our emergency planning. We're gonna have the implement, we're gonna implement those listening sessions and not just once or twice, but continually to make sure we're getting feedback. And we're going to provide the parents the opportunity to walk through this building in specific because of the Zero Eyes and Evolve systems that are different maybe than the other buildings and to get a look at the mass notification amber alerts as well. And again, that date is gonna be August 19th, time to be determined. We're trying to make sure that we make it available to parents who, who work during the regular, like nine to five workday. And so it's probably gonna extend into the evening, late afternoon into evening on the 19th.
Anyone else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just a reminder, I'm Pam Beal, the Special Education Director here in Oxford. And I'm joined with Mr. Todd Barless, our new Executive Director of Student Services and Wellness. And we're here this evening to present to you for, for questions and feedback, the mental health portion of our three-year recovery plan. So some data points that we've taken from some of the surveys. Eighty-five percent of parents and staff indicated that anxiety was a high concern facing students today. Sixty-six percent of parents and staff indicated accessing behavioral health resources was a need of their student. And then sixty-four percent of our parents indicated they'd like some increased communication as to how to access behavioral health resources. So that, along with many other data points, were taken into consideration as well as talking to NCSS and getting their feedback into the next four goals and coinciding action steps. So I will go through the four goals in this area and then open it up to you for input, feedback and questions. Our first goal is centered around wanting to make sure that we're providing psychological education to support student, staff, family and community mental health. We'd like to refine our internal process for getting service, getting mental health services to students. Through our MTSS or our tiered approach to intervention, we want to make sure we're providing education for all, but that we also have processes in place for students to not only self-refer, but that we're actively trying to seek and identify students in need. We'd also like to work with our external resources, some of our partnerships, to develop a common understanding of when, where and how we're referring our students to outside resources. As Jill mentioned, Okay to Say, we do want to continue those efforts to make sure that individuals feel empowered to report concerning behavior. We'd like to continue to review and promote the Go Guardian Parent App. We hope to increase our efforts to educate youth of suicide intervention and prevention. We'd like to review our student assessment protocol with our mental health staff. We, we'd like to host parent and guardian workshops regarding all aspects of mental health. We can, want to continue to utilize the Prepare model. And this provides guidance for psychological crisis intervention and responding to crisis events. Our second goal was to focus on increasing capacity in order to support student mental health. So we've had several staff additions, family school liaisons, one at every building at the elementary level, increase the number of those mental health supports in all of our buildings. We also have the Recovery Coordinator, Todd standing beside me. And we did increase administration at the high school by adding a third assistant principal. And then we also have our partnerships. As you know, the Easter Seals Partnership was our co-location. So they provide school-based therapy in our schools. We've been working with Jamie at the Resiliency Center and in collaboration with Common Ground on how we can partner and refer there. And then with this being tabled, we would love to get your input and feedback on partnering with other community resources so that we can make sure we're supporting student mental health. Our third goal was for us to be mindful of, of mental health when thinking about best practices in our classrooms. So we've been doing work and we want to continue to do work with our ISD to make sure that we can see a trauma-informed approach to learning. And that's not just in the physical space or setting of the classroom, but, and also how we're interacting with students and even in, in how we write our curriculum and how we're being trauma-informed in our units of study. I've been up here before talking to you about our, our OCS Facility Dog Program. So we have received donations, generous donations to be able to purchase 11 dogs for our Oxford Dog Pack. We haven't named it yet, but our Oxford Dog Pack. Nine of them are in training with Brighton Area Schools, with the partnership with Brighton, Brighton Area Schools right now. I'm happy to report two of them will be transitioning to their host homes with two high school staff members. So we should, end of August, early September, start to see Bean and Santo in the high school. Those are our community dogs. Something not on here, but I did want to mention, we have also had discussions of while we are starting our own dog program, it does take time because they are in training. We want to make sure that they are, are ready to be therapy support animals for students. However, we know that the dogs have been very comforting to our students. So while we are introducing our two dogs, Santo and Bean, to the high school, we do plan on partnering with some volunteer groups to, to continue to have dogs in the building for our students. And then our last goal was, again, repeated, we'll have a, a mental health committee to help us, to help guide these action steps to make sure that these are things that the community still wants and needs. Listening sessions and then something that came up numerous times in our conversations with NCSS that really hit a chord with us is they really promote the development of a, of a youth advisory council. And they provided several examples and talked through with us how important it is to empower youth, youth leaders in the area, in several different areas, but mental health specifically, to talk about their views on, on mental health, suicide prevention and, and those type of things. So those are the four goals. I know that was a lot of action steps, but is there any feedback, input or questions that you have?
Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you. Oh, Mary?
Don't need to go so late. Thank you very much. I think this is a really great start. Was, looks like we got a lot of work in front of us. I, I think it's great that we're, we are seeking advice from professionals, you know, and acting on that advice. And I'd like to see students getting involved in a lot more of these types of things. And I know you were talking about it with some of your work too. So thank you. Thank you for all this work. And thank you for reading the data, you know, and working off of the data. And I'll second what Cory had said earlier about people taking surveys. I know sometimes people feel really inundated with all these questions. But please hear that we, this is, this is how we gather data. This is, this is how we know what our, what our community needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else?
Just real quick to point out, there's, it says involve stakeholders and we just had a typo that we left board members off of that. The board members will be invited to join each of the five committees as well too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna invite Anita Conji Collins up for social emotional learning. And Steve Wolf.
Thanks, Pam. All right, Anita and I are here to share the social emotional learning target area for our three-year plan. And we first wanted to start with some of the data from our parent survey and our staff survey and our student surveys to kind of frame the need of improving our SEL across the district. So first and foremost, about half of high school students reported they cannot clearly explain how they feel. That might be a percentage that some adults might also mirror as well. About fifty-seven percent of high school students reported they do not follow a routine to complete their schoolwork. That some of the executive functioning skills that we know are important for students to be successful, not only in the classroom, but also throughout their lives. About a third of our parents reported that their students do not ask for help when they need it. That one might not be a surprise to our parents in our community. About half of our teachers reported that students do not know how to care for themselves, the health, stress management and their own well-being. And then about forty-four percent of teachers reported that students do not take responsibility for their behaviors or their actions. And that is more of a reflection of students being aware of what those emotions are and then having the skills to be able to navigate them and manage them successfully. So that data kind of supports the need for improvement across our district in this target area, SEL. Our first goal is to reinforce a positive, supportive learning environment. Of course, with the purpose of our students and our staff acquiring and then applying the knowledge that we can help them obtain throughout the school day. What's important to note here is that the skills and the attitudes that students can acquire will help develop healthy identities, help manage those emotions and then achieve success and a sense of well-being throughout the school day. So this isn't more or less about, hey, know this information. It's also about knowing yourself and being able to manage that and build the skills to navigate through that successfully. We're in the education business and teaching kids is our number one priority. But if students aren't in a mental state and have an ability to navigate their own emotions, learning can be a huge barrier. So academics is always one of our top priorities next to safety. But we also want students to be able to successfully work through some challenges that we all have to be able to absorb as much of the learning as they can in the classroom. So a few of our action steps and strategies Anita and I wanted to point out. At the elementary school, we want to review our existing SEL and anti-bullying curriculums to evaluate what exact needs or considerations we might want to have what is currently in place. That extends all the way through with an alignment in our early childhood and preschool programs and going as far as to building very robust weekly lessons and improving those SEL activities with our students. At the secondary level, pretty similar, evaluating and trying to initially improve those SEL advisory lessons at the middle school. And then kind of in the infancy state, the high school, which began a little bit last year. Also getting some support from a lot of outside resources for sure. At the secondary level, leaning on Oakland schools and some of the expertise they have and some of the work they've done with the high school staff with the trauma-informed instructional training. We hope to build and improve our advisory lessons to help students, again, acquire those, those skills and to be able to apply them in their time, not only in the school, but outside of the school day as well. The state does have SEL competencies. They're more or less adopted from Castle. And we, this year at the secondary level, want to go through those competencies and really approach those lessons by targeting those competencies. That way we know we have a very comprehensive SEL curriculum built throughout the secondary level. We do know there's an opportunity to align those currently with what we call our ATLs. And those are our approaches to learning. And that's just some NYPD or IB language which describes the way in which we approach learning in the classroom. Those are our activities, our classroom strategies, how we have kids engage with the curriculum. It doesn't mean that we're going to look at our, let's say, history curriculum and take out content. That's not at all the case. It's more or less reviewing, looking at best practices of how we approach and engage kids in the content, being mindful of some of those SEL targets and competencies. And so we're excited about being able to help continue to train our staff from K-12, embed some of those advisory lessons and also look at our curriculum as well in each of our classrooms across the district. We're also going to work on enhancing and improving our PBIS programs. That's Positive Behavior Interventions in Support. And those are a lot of different activities and lessons throughout our buildings which promote clear expectations for behavior, for learning, which ultimately builds a positive school climate and culture. One thing we've worked hard on this year and getting some help from quite a few staff members throughout our district is conducting some after-school and then summer activities recently. And so just trying to keep our kids engaged and involved in the school, not only to enjoy their time in our district, but to enjoy one another and, and spread joy amongst ourselves. And so we've had more participation at the elementary level, similar to some of our summer school programs. And again, as Ken mentioned, a lot of that is due to secondary, older students being involved in athletics, clubs, even work. And that's the time of which they do that mostly in the summer. All in all, we've had about a thousand students or so participate in some of these summer activities, which has been outstanding. Had some great opportunities for our students and we do hope to continue that during the school year when we pick up here in a few weeks and extend that throughout the school year. Perhaps not on the same consistent basis as what we did this summer, a few times a week at each of the levels. But we do want to extend that and even build that into some of the current clubs and activities we have going, at least across the secondary level. So that is our first goal and I'll pass it over to Anita for our second goal.
So the second goal, very similar to the mental health major goal or, or strategy is increasing personnel and operational capacity. So this includes additional staff. And as Pam Beal mentioned, the primary staff members who will be working with SEL will be our family school liaisons. It will be like a team effort, but they will be the, the teachers and delivers of those social emotional learning lessons. I do want to clarify with, as we review our existing curriculum and as we're looking to evaluate and, and doing the committee work with our social emotional learning curriculum, we are going to continue implementing our current curriculum so that there is no gap in instruction in, in that area. So as we're doing this work, we'll be continuing to implement our existing curriculum parallel to that. And the final goal in this area, again, is that stakeholder involvement. And the final goal in this area, again, is that stakeholder involvement, um, so very similar to the previous goals of making sure we're involving all stakeholders, implementing the listening, um, sessions and the circles. And similar to the mental health, youth advisor, youth advisory council, we will consider, um, exploring the development, um, of a, an SEL or social emotional learning youth advisory council. Those are the three main goals for social emotional learning.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Dan?
While we expand our offerings of SEL here in the buildings, we have to try on top of that, number one, as a board and, and as administrative team and as a superintendent, to reach out to the parents because we can only do so much. And they see them more than we do, for the most part. We have to set up a line of communication that is cooperative. I don't know what that looks like, but I think it's imperative that we do so because we have to figure out a way to have a teamwork relationship with parents so that this doesn't go missing once they leave our buildings. Cause we can't catch everything. We have, and it's not to put the responsibility on, and not to shriek responsibility, but it is a cry for partnership.
It definitely takes a village. I'm a firm believer of that. And you'll see when we get to, um, it, when you actually look at the detailed document, one of the areas, um, for involving stakeholders is actual workshops for families. One of the things that we heard in the spring at the family forums was, "I don't always know what to say or how to help my child at home or what to look for. I need strategies and tips as well." So, um, and that was also evident in the survey data. So you would see that in the larger plan, but also when we get to the community outreach part of the plan, you'll see those opportunities, um, built in.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna have Dave Pass come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, uh, tonight I'm going to share with you some of the information around staff wellness and retention. Um, a lot of this work really began last summer. Um, and last summer recognizing, you know, significant needs with our, with our staff. Um, we went out to bid to explore our benefits consultants. Um, and to really, you know, one of our motivating factors was, um, a consultant that had the resources to be able to support wellbeing initiatives in the district, um, and to be able to support that work, uh, with, with their staff. And so we were happy to, to land with, um, Gallagher and, uh, really began that work. Um, obviously that was, that was put on pause for a while last year, but we did go out and, uh, conduct that interest survey in the spring to get a gauge of, of where our employees are at. And as you can see here, the, uh, there were four key areas that were, were surveyed around. Um, that's emotional, emotional wellbeing, uh, physical wellbeing, career, and then financial wellbeing. And, um, the two that clearly stood out, uh, is that 50% of employees ranked emotional wellbeing, um, as their number one priority, and 36% of employees ranked physical wellbeing. And so, as we get into the work this year, those will clearly be, um, a significant focus for us. Oops. Okay, messed this up. Yeah, that's why I was, there we go. Sorry. Okay, so our, our first goal is establishing a culture of wellbeing that will provide employees the ongoing support and resources needed to be successful. Um, and there are multiple areas, uh, and facets of this in terms of our purpose. Uh, one, to reduce employee stress and create a work environment that leads to flourishing for all of our district employees, uh, to improve employee retention in the district, um, to reduce, uh, sick days and absenteeism, and increase performance and productivity. And then, uh, also to provide employees with the incentives, tools, uh, support and strategies to build a healthy lifestyle. And so, really at the nucleus of all of this work is going to be the formation of a wellbeing committee. And so we're gonna begin that in September to form a, a committee of representative, um, staff members from across all the buildings in the district. It'll be very important that, um, all of our buildings are represented. Uh, that group will help identify some of our wellbeing initiatives. We did, in that interest survey, we do have some, uh, suggested activities and interests that came out of that, and, uh, we'll revisit that with the committee, uh, to see where that work takes us. We're gonna research and implement an employee assistance plan, uh, aimed at addressing employee needs, uh, identified in the interest survey. We do have a limited employee assistance plan in place right now. Um, there has not been a significant utilization of what we have, but that's gonna be part of our work going forward is to, um, you know, determine what our employee interests are, um, and, and what we might want to do moving forward, and if there is a need, you know, for some of these expanded benefits. So that is something that we're investigating right now. We're paring down to a couple of different providers, um, that we're actually gonna be interviewing in September, and then we will bring that feedback to our committee once that committee is established. Uh, we talk about establishing future contracts aimed at providing excellent benefits and compensation packages. And as the board's aware, we just, uh, settled three-year contracts with all, all of our bargaining groups. Um, and as we've discussed previously, that was clearly a focus for us, um, in, in bringing, um, strong contracts to the, to the board this year that were really focused on, uh, retention of, of our employees around competitive benefits and packages. Um, and then, of course, we're going to continue to provide employee interest surveys and evaluate on, ongoing needs which we suspect will certainly change over time. Uh, certainly creating a supportive environment will be a, a critical goal in this area, and it's crucial to increasing employee wellbeing and creating a, a productive organization. A couple of components and steps involved in that is integrating, uh, health education awareness into our professional development throughout the district. Uh, we also recognize that Laura Zoni, our new recovery coordinator, will be integral in being able to not only support, um, students throughout the district, but be able to guide some of our, our work moving forward and supporting our, um, employees. And, uh, you know, this area is, is also, I think, embedded in a lot of the other, other areas that you've seen in the plan in terms of creating a supportive environment that I think, um, you know, exist in, in, um, other areas that you've heard from tonight. And then finally, as you've seen with the other goal areas, um, and making sure that, um, we're involving our stakeholders throughout this process and, and stakeholders in this particular goal, it looked a little bit different because this is very much employee-focused. Um, but we also recognize that, that, uh, when we're successful in supporting the needs of our employees, uh, that has a significant effect, um, on our kids and our community. And so, uh, we're gonna be embedded in a, a significant amount of work this year around, around wellbeing and particularly the physical and emotional wellbeing components and, um, you know, hope to, to begin that work with our committee, um, once we're established around the end of September. So, any questions from the board?
Any comments or questions? Heather?
But when you talk about implementing listening sessions to receive feedback, listening sessions with whom?
So, so primarily the listening sessions will be the district-wide committee, but we do anticipate that as we, as we get into that work, work with our consultant and kind of develop our, our scope of work and what this is gonna look like. Um, some of that listening is also gonna happen at the building level. So, which is partly why we don't want to make sure that we've got representation across the district. And so, whoever those wellbeing, um, committee members that are representing each of the buildings, our hope is that they're gathering feedback from their building so we can identify the needs and, and anticipate that needs may look different depending on the buildings and, and what's happening. And so we want to be able to support that going forward.
Mary?
Speaking of different buildings having different needs, uh, can I assume that the admin building is included as one of those buildings because those needs are a lot different than the buildings where we have students?
Yes.
They're the whole different.
Yes, absolutely.
Right. Um, when you talk about the employee assistance plan, um, it makes sense to me to be able to, um, choose a provider or choose a pieces of, from the provider that we want based on that input. I know that personal experience with EAPs, you know, sometime, I have, I have used some of those services and sometimes they just sit by the wayside because it's, they're things that I'm not really interested in and things that I don't need. So, um, it would be great if we can have it a little more comprehensive, you know, uh, being able to pick the pieces that we would need, that people would actually use. Because if people aren't using it, then it doesn't make sense to invest our time and energy in it.
Right, right. And that's one of the things that we want to be able to evaluate with the committee. Um, you know, it's not a significant cost to implement an employee assistance program, but we want to make sure that, that we're providing the right resources with those plans and that those are resources that our, our folks would want to access. Um, and so we want to get that feedback to see if that's, that's a place where we want to invest our dollars to support our employees, or if we need to be doing things with some of our existing benefits, you know, differently in programs. So, uh, but that committee is gonna be essential, I think, to getting the feedback we need to move forward.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Beal and myself are here to just share a little bit about our community and government outreach part of the recovery plan. Um, I'll start with, um, I appreciate all of you guys' references to the data. Each strategy was supported with, with community voice, parents, student, um, surveys, and it really drove a lot of our, our planning in this process. So, this particular section draws from our spring district surveys as well as North Oakland Community Coalition surveys. So it's not just district. 90% of our parents and guardians expressed a moderate to high need for behavioral health services and resources. 80% expressed a moderate to high need for parent forums. 79% a moderate to high need for community education presentations. 86% would value and participate in opportunities to help them learn more about social emotional learning development and how they can support it at home. And, um, this is interesting, um, because this goes back to some of those community resources we referenced in the, um, Honor Health, Community Health Clinic presentation. But our community states that, um, 30% of them who responded in this survey were unsure of what they needed. 29% financial costs were barriers, and, um, 25% of them saw wait lists, uh, to get services as being a barrier. So, as we move forward, uh, with our plan, we want to develop partnerships and leverage our characteristics and resources and strengths of a variety of community agencies. Um, so those agencies include Easter Seals, the Resiliency Center with Jamie Ayers who, who, uh, is working with us. Um, we part, partner with Oakland County Sheriff's Department with our school resource officers, um, strengthening partnerships with existing structures and organizations such as faith-based institutions, um, parent teacher organizations, boosters, and library, uh, organizations of, of the such. We also want to provide education and increase engagement. So this goes back to, um, I believe Dan had a question earlier about collaboration between families and school personnel as a key to improving student development and learning outcomes. It's really engaging that, those stakeholders in that process. And so the parent guarding and student education workshops are gonna be valuable there as action steps, as well as SEL relationship with our summer activities, after-school activities that, that Steve referenced earlier. And then our, our other goal is ensure our plan reflects the needs and priorities of our community at large, leading to an, an environment of trust, empowerment, and ownership by everyone. So promoting transparency in the actions of our plan to gain support, commitment, and ensure sustainability. That re, the purpose of this is to involve our stakeholders, which I think we've referenced in many, uh, many areas of, of this three-year plan. So, um, some examples or action steps would include, um, a committee or committees to help guide district decisions and identify measurables of overall areas, implement listening sessions over the next three years to receive feedback on the plan implementation, and explore the development of community outreach, uh, through youth advisory council. Any questions?
Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Just to wrap up, as you can see, then, um, in a week we'll be looking at, or less than a week, trying to do, uh, doing the town, tell a town hall, trying to get feedback so kind of make sure that the understanding of the plan is out there. Uh, it is quite a hefty plan. It was quite a bit of work. Uh, some 21 pages, uh, complete with a, uh, glossary, um, alignment to the strategic plan as well. Uh, over two-thirds of the, uh, initiatives that have been in the strategic plan that have been sitting there for some time as we've worked through COVID, um, then obviously the tragedy last year. Um, you know, the strategic plan has kind of just sat there as, as, it's been very difficult, uh, just to provide education on a daily basis for, over the last three years. And so a lot of that is embedded in here. And what the, 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 the hope and the expectation of cabinet is that by setting this, the table with this plan and, and having those supports there for kids, then as the year goes along, we're able to then transition into the academic supports, into the academic realm, trying to then reestablish that and making sure, I mean, these, these children have had three years of incomplete curriculum being delivered. Um, so that's one of the areas of concern as we move forward, um, is making sure first and foremost that, um, you know, they experience a solid year of, of getting a, the full curriculum delivered to them, uh, and, and making sure that happens. Uh, but it really allows us then to really get involved back into the strategic plan, uh, as well as school improvement in coupled with that. And that'll address the other third of the strategic initiatives and also then start lifting up the academic side of things and returning back to, uh, much hopefully before COVID and all of that, and, and that, those expectations for the amount of curriculum covered, the amount of content, the rigor. Uh, we felt like it, you know, until we got a, you know, making sure, cause we're not sure with kids coming back exactly, um, the state, we may find them. So we wanted to make sure there was enough supports for both staff as well. Staff was a concern as well, especially at the high school, obviously, but we had a lot of parents who also had children in the building that day, making sure that we had all of those different supports, ready to help lift people up, lift individuals up, make sure they've got the support to where they can, uh, be engaged fully in their education. And then at that part, point, start to lift up the academics as we move along through this year. So that's the hope. I mean, this plan has been really, uh, six, seven weeks of continuous work. Uh, we've been partnering with our partners at NCSS. I also should mention, I forgot to mention Jamie Ayers who's here as well. Uh, she hasn't been, uh, necessarily on the plan. She's been very instrumental in supporting and, and helping with resources, and that partnership has been very beneficial for the school as well, too. So that has been a big part, and, um, we are ready, like I said, hopefully to move forward and get, um, any other feedback that you have, you can send us through, uh, email or directly or whatever you have, or if you have any other further comments. And then, like I said, we'll present, uh, to the community and then start that process of getting feedback, starting to create some of the committees that are embedded within the plan, uh, as well, and then come back and report, uh, to the board as well as we move forward with this, this plan for recovery. Um, and then in, in three years, we'll probably reassess, see where we're at, and then try to adjust and move, and as we move, um, forward at that point, and we'll see where we're at. Um, so that's the idea behind it.
All right, before we move on, is there any, uh, last comments or questions that any of the board members have? Um, Cory and then Mary?
Do we have any idea of expectations for year one, year two, year three for education to kind of put the challenge out there to say, hey, we want to be here, we want to be here in year two, year three, so that we don't focus on too much on the social emotional, and kids aren't hitting the SATs they need to get into college and things like that, and, uh...
Well, a lot of it is with reestablishing the fact of following the, a full year's curriculum. Honestly, they have missed anywhere from a third to a quarter of the curriculum and its opportunities. I mean, that is the first thing that has to be reestablished, as well as the level of rigor over the last three years due to, to COVID and the tragedy, the level of rigor as we've tried to uphold and try to support kids as they move along. I mean, that's gonna be the first adjustment that we have to make, and that's what we plan on doing, especially the first year. And then we're hoping, as the school improvement process, because those school improvement goals are best set through the buildings because they are so unique and individual to the different grade levels, the different content areas, um, that we're hoping then that they, as that process works, they'll be setting the goals and setting the expectations to improve as, as they move along. Um, and those will be presented to the board as well, too, so they can see that progress and see that presented as we go along, too. Because there's a lot of different measures that, um, can be used to measure academic, uh, improvement, not just the M-step. Matter of fact, M-step and SAT, um, if you do any research into those at all, are... are very heavily, the number one factor is social and not, social economic status. And then after that, it starts to become teachers and other educational things. So they're not always the best to measure. They are one measure that is used, obviously, and we do use them. But we also have our other academic internal measures as well, too, our common assessments, as well as other assessments that we have, our FAST assessments as well, can measure academic. NWEA measures also the academic progress as well, too. So that's really what our hope is, to get the school year started with these, and then as we go through and then start setting and looking at the academics. I mean, it was really quite a bit and quite an effort to, to go through all of this, to make sure the kids are safe, that they're secure, as well as making sure that their, their need to feel included and everything else is met in the plan. And then as we go to lift off and then start setting those goals. And a lot of that will be set probably, it will be in the same way, through school improvement committees that should involve stakeholders as well, too. And can involve board members as well, too. I would put that out there as well. School improvement committees are also made of parents as well, and at the high school levels and others, it's, you know, relevant to have students as they set their goals and so forth. And like I said, we'll bring that back for, just for the sake of the board and its knowledge as well, too. The whole school improvement process in the state of Michigan has been basically torn apart for the last three years. They are slowly but surely putting it back together. It was supposed to be, actually, it's a little bit longer than three years now. And they are slowly but surely putting the whole process back together. That's required by state law, and that is how essentially schools, the school engine for schools to improve their academic scores. So that's what's happening, is we're starting with, it's called the MYKIP, and trying and setting up that process as we go along. So those will be brought to you as well, too. But hopefully, not too far behind all of this. But we do need to have a little bit of time to get this up and going and make sure all of this is in place before we move on to those. But the hope is not, not too far. As well as having some, like I said, just returning back to the expectations of covering all the curriculum.
Did you have a follow-up, Corey?
No.
Mary?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the format of the full report, being able to see the goals and the action steps. And I, I really appreciate this format. It's easy, it's easy for me to read, and I can see where we are, and I think it gives us those, it gives us some of those deliverables, so we know where we're at. And it's a, it's a really helpful reference. And I kind of following up on what Corey was talking about. You know, I'm really seeing, I'm seeing a lot of work on the front end to establish some things, but I, I mean, I'm seeing this, the goal of this is to be a part of what we do. I mean, this is, this is how we educate. You know, we're looking at how we do this, and all these pieces are a part of it. This isn't something that we just do, and then it's there, and then we go on about our business. I mean, we're talking about integrating this, you know, into our culture and what works we move forward with, and what didn't work so great, you know, we can adjust. And I think the fluidity of that is very important also. I, I mean, I'm, I, when we're talking about the academics, I keep thinking about all the work that the, everybody has, but it just keeps coming to mind about the English department and rewriting these curriculums and doing these book clubs. And I, and I know that we're going to continue to move forward with these things. This sounds like a lot of, you know, a lot of these other things that we're doing, but we are still, we are still bringing our curriculum to our students. We are still teaching students on a daily basis. So that's all.
Yeah, that's, that's obviously our primary business is to educate and make sure. A lot of these, a lot of which is embedded in here, supports the academic skills that the kids have. And it's very important for them to make sure. It's, it's one of the things that through the process in the two years of COVID, with the social distancing, the online learning, being in, being out, and so, and a lot of that, a lot of the basic executive functioning skills and other skills that are kind of embedded in the SEL, and it sounds like it's, you know, that soft learning stuff, but it's really about gathering those, those skills and abilities that impact learning. And that's what the ATL is, which you can see in either approaches to learning through the IB program. It's about gathering those skills that make you a lifelong learner and making sure, and we're finding that a lot of kids, and especially over the, you know, like I said, the last three years, and with as much time has been out, and then the concentration on, you know, healing and making sure the kids are recovering, that a lot of those skills have been lost. So that's why we're trying to really, out of the gate, impact those areas, which will have a direct impact as well eventually on the, the academics. And then as soon as we can get that lifted off the ground and then come back through and really concentrate on the academics and start pushing on that as well. But we wanted to make sure, like I said, we don't know what, where our students are going to be at when they come back. And we felt like, you know, that's the first thing, is to make sure they're supported coming back into the, the academic environment, and as well as our staff, and making sure that they're ready to go, because it really does, like Mrs. Concha Collins said, it takes a village, and that's important as well, too. So it's, it's going to take all of that staff to help us with this and making sure. And a lot of this stuff, we've already started, we've done, but we're also saying we're going to review it, see what we can improve, see if it needs to change, and try to measure it as well, too. And there's a lot of, while there's maybe not like an academic goal of, hey, we're going to improve five percent, there's a lot of things that you can check and see and hold accountable to as far as this program being implemented, this program being reviewed and maybe changed, or adapted, or so forth.
Any other comments or? Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. And thank you very much for all the presenters, tremendous amount of work. Thank you. We are on 4C. We are going to be moving into closed session. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Can you have? Okay.
So we're going to go into closed session, and I appreciate the acknowledgement earlier about my schedule and all that, and I really do. And it really, to me, was really no sacrifice, because this is where I needed to be. And I was reminded, I was at a conference call, and two of my coworkers graciously took my spot to be there. So they said, you need to be where you need to be, because that's where your mind is at. But really, it was, and I see her over there. It was a saying of a teacher of mine, from, I had four years in elementary school, and it wasn't that I was in the same grade for four years, but she said, you, just because you're not somewhere, doesn't mean the world stops. You have to make sure you're where you're supposed to be. So I want to tell her thank you very much, and so that's, I see her over there, and I know it's getting late, so I just wanted to thank her.
Beautiful, beautiful. Do we have a sound tech up there? We're running really hot. We're buzzing like crazy. Turn them up? All right. Testing, one, two, there we go. All right, I've got mine at noon. All right, thank you, Dan, for that. We're going to go into closed session. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor, please? Heather?
Okay. Move, move, move in supported to move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8E, for the purpose of consulting with its attorney regarding trial strategy in connection with cases number 21 CV 12871, 22 CV 10407, 22 CV 10805, 22 CV 11113, 22 CV 11250, 22 CV 11360, 22 CV 11251, 22 11398, 22 11448, 22 192262, and 22 194891.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Dan's support?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mary, a roll call vote?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. DeAlessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster's absent. Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Donnelly?
Yes. So there's five yeses. We are going to be going into closed session. We do, are we going to the same room we typically do? Okay. And so, thank you for your patience, and we will be back shortly. All right, everyone, good evening, and thank you for your patience. We're coming out of closed session. It is 9:43. Angela? Very good. From the agenda's perspective, we are now going to 4D, and the attorneys have left. There are some things happening in the next 48 hours that we ask them to wait for any kind of presentation until those 48 hours are, they, they get some things done, and they'll have more for us. So we're going to go to E, which is the Oxford High School Varsity Football Field Trip Request. Thank you. Is someone going to speak to that before we? Dan?
I'm not going to speak to it, I'll just make the motion.
Oh, okay, I just want to know, is anybody to speak to it first?
No, nobody's going to speak, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Dan, please?
Move to approve the Varsity Football Trip Request with Oxford Community Schools Transportation to Covenant Hills Camp on August 20th, August 20th, 2022, and return on August 21st, 2022.
Thank you. Is there support? Corey's support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We now go on to the 2022 MASB Call for Delegates. Mary?
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly, I can speak to that a little bit. Each year at the MASB Annual Leadership Conference, which is happening this year in October, the MASB reviews their resolutions for any changes and the bylaws if there are any changes. All of this information is sent out to every district, every member in every district. And at the meeting, at the annual meeting, each district has, sends a delegate to bring their vote to the full MASB. Now again, these are, or I just want to let people know that these are not necessarily policies, these are resolutions. These are the things that MASB as an organization stands for and their legislative priorities. It's not, it's not setting any policies, it's not setting any laws. It's, it's the organization's voice, and how are they going to speak on behalf of us? So the, each district sends one representative as the delegate to vote or introduce any new items or any changes as they would want.
Thank you for that description. And in so doing, are, is your desire or wish to be that delegate?
I would be honored to, again, be the delegate for Oxford. I am planning on attending the Annual Leadership Conference coming up.
Dan?
Move to appoint Mary Hanser to attend the 2022 Delegate Assembly on Thursday, October 20th, 2022.
Is there support? Heather's support? Discussion? Thank you, Mary. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We're now down to G, Post-Construction Storm Water Control Regulatory Mechanism.
All right, this is a time when I wish Mr. Barna was here. This is basically, from what I understood, it's not something we really have a choice on. We need to abide by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or it's also known as Egle, E-G-L-E, requirements to participate to for the storm water control. So it really is about anytime we disturb an amount of earth, of one acre or greater, or earth that's a servant of less than one acre, but just part of a larger common plan, we've got to make sure that we are good stewards and that we are submitting information to them to make sure we are following the storm water, sorry about that, storm water requirements, to making sure that the proper water that can go into the storm water drain goes in versus other water that is not appropriate, and so forth. So it is basically for you to pass the resolution. It's something that I believe is becoming pretty standard. Every year we'll be asked to, to do this, to pass that, yes, we agree to abide by those rules, even though we really don't have the ability not to.
So it's, it's a statement that we understand?
Yes.
That it's a requirement?
It's basically you acknowledging that you've, it's a way of them making sure that you have acknowledged that you have to follow these, and that they are out there.
And so something like the land balancing that we recently did would be one, something that could fall under this?
Yes.
Regulation?
Yes. We would have to make sure. And Mr. Sarkins and Mr. Barna are well aware of this. Neither one of them could be here tonight, so I am acting in their stead.
So the last thing, as we pass this, we're passing it to say that we understand that this is a regulation, a requirement that we have to fulfill, and so Tony and team will have to do this anytime we move enough earth that meets that requirement?
Yes.
Got it.
It's their way of keeping us accountable.
Got it. All right. Would someone, Dan?
Move to approve the Regulatory Mechanism Resolution for the Storm Water Management System.
Very good. Is there support? Corey's support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. There's nothing under Curriculum and Instruction, is that true?
Correct.
Okay. Human Resources? We passed the Consent Agenda. Safety and School Operations? Jill Lamond?
Hello again. I believe Alan from Eagle Security is somewhere here, too, for questions. He was waiting around. I just, we had mentioned before about the Mass Notification System and came to you for the original bid package. We've made some changes to the way in which we'd like the system to function. Rather than having enunciators throughout the building, we'd like to have key card readers, similar to the ones that open and close the doors, so that any staff member with a badge can alert the system and alert a lockdown. Hello, Alan. Brought him if you have any questions this evening about that system. But everything else will be identical in terms of the placement of the beacons and the way in which the system works. It's just the way that we arm it now. Instead of using an enunciator only in the main office and two remote locations, we've added an additional four locations in the building for a total of seven different enunciators, or I'm sorry, seven different card readers and areas for us to alert. It's just such a large building at the high school, and then we foresaw the same issue at the middle school, and they were able to assess that building and add a few for us as well. Rather than using a small key then to open up the cabinets, staff can activate the system with their card. We don't have to in any way use our fine motor skills. It just was a safer, better way to activate the system.
And the reason why there's two motions, simply because it's two different buildings?
Correct.
But the same thing happening in each building?
Yes, at the middle school at a small, on a smaller scale.
Yep.
I do anticipate that we will be pretty close at the elementaries, but I may need to come with a third later on, after all the elementary work is prepared. But it won't be anywhere near this amount, would be my guess.
Okay. All right, let's, it's two different motions. Let's put the high school one on the floor, and then we can see if we have any questions for our gentleman. Heather, please?
Okay. Move to approve the Change Order Number Three, the Mass Notification System at Oxford High School for the cost of $40,480.
All right, very good, thank you. Is there support? Mary's support? Any discussion? Any questions of our experts there? Mary?
I just, if you could, please reiterate, Mrs. Lamond, that this, this is a change order because we wanted to change. We realized that this would be the safer, better way to do it, and we should add the stations. So this wasn't a, this, the quote was still correct, we've just made a change.
Absolutely. Yep. And to give just an example of utilization, so if we had a group that was, for example, renting the Performing Arts Center, and the enunciators were in the classroom hallways and in the main office, they might not have access to that. And we wanted any, any part of the building, the natatorium. So we went through and Alan was with us and strategically placed those throughout the building, identified the best spots for those, and added more of them.
Anyone else? Seeing none on the high school motion? All those in favor? all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone put the motion on for the middle school? Yes, Heather?
Okay, that's fine. Move to approve change order number four, the mass notification system at Oxford Middle School for the cost of twenty thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Do we have support? Corey, support? Discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Nope. From the website, sorry. Do you know how I get just out to the website?
You want to slide to a motion?
I'm close, I'm sorry. Okay, that'll work. Sorry about that. Um, Sasha's in here with me tonight, but our tech director for operational technology and I, um, worked with our instructional director of technology to come up with sort of a Chromebook refresh plan. I think it was mentioned at the last school board meeting. I wanted to give you an idea of what we currently have in terms of a fleet. Those are the model numbers at our elementaries and secondary level, as well as OVA, of what we currently have, number of devices in the district. These are the expiration dates for all of those different models, so this is in your board packet, when those will expire. And we are proposing a cycled plan, so keeping all of our devices on what is a four-year lifecycle. And so the devices are under warranty for three of those four years. Um, and all the devices would need to be fourteen inches in order to do state testing. We, um, just made that determination as well. So every year in kindergarten, we would equip the kindergartners with a, with a, uh, device, fifth graders and ninth graders to receive the Chromebooks. K through four Chromebooks have a five-year lifecycle and are stored in the building and not taken home. The fifth graders and the ninth graders would take their devices home and when fifth graders complete eighth grade, they would then get a new device to begin ninth grade. And so that hopefully is to alleviate these large tech purchases where we're just suddenly must completely replace our entire fleet. We wanted to get into more of a cycle, um, to do so. And so I wanted to explain that to you. It's a very common cycle in a lot of other school districts. I know Sasha worked with several different districts in Oakland County. Um, this is fairly common. And so what it requires are current counts, four hundred and fifteen kindergartners, four hundred and thirty-five fifth graders and four hundred and eight ninth graders for a total of a little under thirteen hundred Chromebooks this year. We're going to round up, assuming that we may have extra needs and, um, some replacements required, and that is the amount that we are hoping to order this year. Um, with the understanding that next year we would do somewhere close to the same amount, right? Assuming similar enrollment. Uh, it just seems to be an easier way to chunk our purchases and to make better use of our technology, so. I would ask this evening that we could purchase, um, those Chromebooks.
So you've rounded up to thirteen hundred?
Yeah, I'm seeing a discrepancy Ken.
But the motion says eighteen hundred. Did you see that?
Yeah.
So is it eighteen or thirteen?
Thirteen.
Everyone, uh, board members, uh, at the top of page four, cross off the eighteen, it's thirteen hundred? Would someone put this motion on the floor, Dan?
Move to approve the purchase of thirteen hundred Chromebooks from Inacop TSG for the total amount of six hundred forty-four thousand four hundred dollars.
And is there support? Heather, support? Discussion? Uh, yes, Mary?
Thank you. So how are the, we have some that are still usable, right? Some, some of these higher level ones that don't go in, how, how are, how are the ones we still have figured into these numbers?
We're going to maintain, those students are going to continue to use their devices. Only kindergarten students, fifth grade students and ninth grade students are getting their devices replaced right now.
Okay. Now, when we talk about, uh, fifth graders and ninth graders taking their devices home, um, the idea is that they're going to keep the same computer?
Yes.
So how do those, how do those get updates? I know we have certain levels of security, um, you know, and there's always, um, software updates that have to come for different types of security and whatnot. Um, how is that going to be handled if the student ever turns it back in?
So those are going to be part of our asset management system that you guys approved a while back, so we're aware of which student has which device. And then those are actually pushed out remotely, our updates. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're looking at C, seven C, the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Student Code of Conduct?
Yep. Code of Conduct. I was just going to update you, I know it's in your board packet. I wanted to highlight some of the specific changes that we made. Um, every year we meet a group of us from the, uh, tribunal, discipline tribunal, to kind of look at the different ways in which we've discussed discipline, either in the buildings or at the tribunal level each year, to come up with a way to enhance or refine our processes, procedures and our code of conduct. So we took our recommended changes and have discussed them and we, we're hoping just to share those with you. Um, for those who have a copy on page eleven, we are reminding parents about the appeal process to the code of conduct and disciplinary action. That's not new, it's just including it as a reminder of, um, Administrative Guideline fifty-six-ten. On page thirteen, we actually list the seven factors to consider when it comes to discipline. They're referenced, but I, we didn't know if parents were absolutely certain of what those factors are, so we listed them out. On, uh, page twenty-three, items twenty-three and twenty-four, were profanity and obscenity against students and profanity and obscenity against staff. We've actually increased the range, those were previously levels one or two. We've increased it levels one, two, or three, depending on the severity of the incident, um, based on some, some specific discipline issues. On page twenty-five, which is item number thirty-six, we've added that drug paraphernalia and intent to distribute could result in a higher level of a drug offense. Um, you know, code of conduct being, being utilized, uh, also for, uh, for repeated drug offenses, that it would be an increasing level of, um, suspension. Page twenty-seven, number forty-seven, we added parts of weapons to the weapon section or tools that may be used to potentially harm. So, um, nothing, you know, nothing too dramatic, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of those and just share that with you tonight. Um, and again, that was with administrator feedback, so.
Thank you for that update. Finance and Maintenance, we're on eight. Mr. Barna's not here, it's, um,
Me.
You are?
I am stepping in for Mr. Barna.
Mr. Weaver, A, Nutrition Services Purchase Update.
Uh, first of all, I talked with Patty, uh, Solari, um, about this, um, as we're getting ready for the board meeting and everything, and she has decided against pursuing. She was looking at, if, as you remember, we had prepared you to, to be seeing a quote possibly, um, for a, I think it was an oven. Uh, she has figured out other ways, um, to go ahead and approach this, um, issue and she said we really don't need it and I'd rather use the, uh, the finances or the resources other ways. So she's pulling that back.
Okay.
So, just wanted to update you on that. Then we have B, Request to Purchase Chromebooks for OVA. Um, we have, um, OVA is always, uh, in constant need of Chromebooks. Uh, we did change out the quote this morning because he was able to save a substantial amount. Uh, we got a quote last minute, um, that saved quite a bit. I'm not sure exactly how much it is, um, that it saved, and so we moved that in and pulled the other one out. Uh, do you know how much it is, Mr. Santler?
It saves us around four thousand dollars and it provides the devices in five days versus three weeks.
Yeah. So, for that reason and because of school starting shortly and that, we, uh, went ahead and moved out the quote and therefore it's before you.
All right, would someone put this motion on the floor, Dan?
Move to approve the, move to approve to purchase a hundred and fifty Chromebook, Chrome, Chromebooks from Trafara for the total amount of forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for OVA.
Thank you very much. Uh, support? Mary, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Office Furniture Purchase Request?
Yeah, we'll be very happy to have Mr. Barna back in the district. Um, as this was one of those where it was like, um, my apologies, we had to get it in last minute. It was thinking incorrectly that it didn't have to go before the board and that was my mistake as a somewhat new rookie superintendent. And luckily, Mrs. Weaver caught it, uh, in the last minute and that. And we are, due to the added staff that we have, um, especially at the high school, uh, we've had to remodel, uh, in the front section of the, the building. Most of the work has been done internally, uh, with our own crew. Uh, some of it we were able to, uh, because it was small amounts, small work, we were able to contract out, uh, and, and some of that. But in the interim, we are trying to purchase, we need to purchase furniture. And what you have in front of you, um, and quite frankly, I didn't realize, um, it's been a while since I bought office furniture, didn't realize it was this expensive as well too. So I was a little surprised, but the, this is all consortium bid. This is actually guaranteed like to be the lowest price, uh, from what I talked with IDS and, and Tony as well too. Um, and so they went through and they're outfitting the offices that we're setting up. You can see in the packet what the office furniture looked like. It'll pretty, it pretty much looks like our other furniture, uh, and fits in with the rest of the decor. Um, and then as well too, you have then the quote as well too, so.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Um, would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Uh, Mary, uh, who, who, somebody? Mary?
Move to approve the purchase of office furniture from Interior Environments for the total amount of forty-six thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you. Is there support? Dan's support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we're going into second readings of policies. Um, Heather, you gonna, you gonna do it again?
Yes, I can. Move to approve the second reading of policy numbers, zero-one-hundred revised definitions, zero-one-six-seven-point-three revised public participation at board meetings, thirty-one-twenty revised employment of professional staff, sixty-one-fourteen revised cost principles spending federal funds, sixty-one-fifty-two revised student fees, fines and supplies, seventy-four-fifty revised property inventory, eighty-three-ten revised public records, eighty-three-twenty revised personnel records, eighty-three-thirty revised student records.
Is there support? Dan's support?
Support.
Is there discussion? Board members, I just want to remind you that in zero-one-six-seven dot three, public participation at board meetings, I want to make sure, uh, someone from the Policy Committee reminds me, but I think that is going to require that the white sheets get turned in at the beginning of the meeting and that time goes back to three minutes where it was years ago? Okay. Is that true?
It was, um, the, it was going to be to, um, you must have your, um, your card turned in at the beginning of public participation, so once public participation starts.
Oh, I see. Is, is that the understanding Angela?
And that was using other cards. That was my.
I just knew the, I, I knew it affected when the cards came in and timing, right? Is that, is that what the committee had worked on? Okay. So maybe what we do because, because it's the part that affects the community the most, is that we find out exactly what that is and we find a way to put that, Ken, in some type of a reminder before our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay? All right. I just want to, I, I just remembered that one, I want to make sure we talked about it. Is there any other discussion anybody has, Dan?
Sure, I can, I can talk to this. Every other school district around us, like Orange, Clarkston, LaPierre, I mean, almost every school district has the same
Mm-hmm.
format. Um, it was back maybe six years, oh, five years ago. Um, as board president at the time, I moved it from three to five, which was well more than what everybody else had. Um, so that's, that's just the history of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Um, second reading of policies, um, Neola updates. Uh, someone want to put this motion on the floor? We're on page four and the top of page five.
You want me to read it?
Please.
Okay. Move to, move to approve the second reading of policy number sixteen-sixteen, new policy, staff dress and grooming, thirty-two-sixteen revised staff dress and grooming, forty-two-sixteen revised support staff dress and grooming, fifty-five-eleven revised dress and grooming, sixty-one-ten revised grant funds, sixty-one-fourteen revised cost principles spending federal funds, sixty-three-twenty-five revised procurement federal grants and funds.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Dan's support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Just a second, Mr. Bailey is, uh, pulling up that actual, um, policy.
Before unscheduled audience participation starts, or not before the meeting starts?
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. It's not before the meeting starts, it's before the, the unscheduled audience participation. All right, very good. Thank you. Um, clarification number ten. Uh, Dan, you had, uh, something that you would like to share?
Thank you. For the past ten years, I've tried to communicate my vision to dozens of school board members, or to my fellow school board members, three superintendents, staff, students, and the community in a manner that fostered a level of trust in myself and in Oxford Community Schools. Outside of my family and my closest friends, who I consider family, nothing is more important to me than this district and our community. The power of a board member is considered to reside at this table. The reality is, it doesn't reside here. Our power resides in all of you and the trust you bestow upon us. Since November thirtieth, that trust has been questioned by some and lost by others. For several months, administrators, my fellow board members and I, have been regrettably quiet about the events of November thirtieth. However, that does not suggest that we have not heard the questions, the calls for answer on a wide range of topics, from the temporary memorial, third-party review, how and when staff and students would return to school, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. Every issue involved deep, deep, lengthy, tense, and sometimes heated discussions. However, in my mind, none were or are to this day more important than the facts of the days leading up to and including November thirtieth. I have opinions like everyone else. I choose not to share my opinions because as a board member, my job, our job, is not to be judge and jury in a mass murder, a mass murder case. The board's job will be to somehow regain the trust of our community and show strength and courage in leadership. Many people have asked, staff members, students, community members, Dan, why don't you speak? It's what you always do, it's what you've always done, we just don't understand, tell us what happened so we can fix it. In the immediate days after November thirtieth, my fellow board members and I were unable to speak factually about the events. Looking back, that led to confusion within the district and the community. I am truly sorry if my silence caused undue heartache. Roughly around Christmas, nothing made sense to me, so I pressed harder, which was met with opposition and even more opposition. I was left with mounting frustration, without answers, I grew more and more uncomfortable with the conflicting stories. I recall, recall a rather tense meeting in November, when I demanded we hire a third party to investigate. It was met with an op, with an opposing legal opis, legal opinion. Looking back, I'm ashamed to say, I caved to what was a decision not to proceed. One conversation I recall, one conversation I recall and need to mention, Tom Donnelly and I were pleading with those who had access to the information and the ability to let the families know the circumstances and events that led to their child's violent moments. Those requests were denied, regrettably, all I could offer was a choice word or two and I left. Admirably, Tom continued pleading for days, each time he met a legal opinion. It was many of our opinion, and I can't recall exactly who agreed, that the families of the deceased should have been made aware of those circumstances. I want to apologize to the families of Madison Baldwin, Hannah St. Juliana, Tate Meyer, and Justin Schilling, as well as their families and loved ones for not providing that information. When my final life chapter is written, I will consider this one of my greatest regrets. Regarding the pending lawsuits, first, I can't comprehend the initial fear a parent has when their child is in that situation, praying for their child to come back to them only to suffer the ultimate heartbreak of losing a child to a senseless tragedy. For those reasons, I will never judge anyone's motive in this case. I hope others will use this perspective before they cast judgment as well. These families of the deceased, as well as those who were injured, should make that decision without judgment. I understand and appreciate the jobs attorneys do. Maybe we should use the level of fidelity in which they perform their job as their legacy, rather than how many defendants they successfully represent, or the amount of money that gets awarded to the plaintiff. In my opinion, we have all suffered a loss. First and foremost, families have lost a child. Our community has lost trust in us. Oxford Schools has lost the ability to focus on our primary goal, educating students. We must refocus on that mission and do it better than ever before. I also want to address a few assertions that have been made recently. First, Oxford continues, Oxford Community Schools continues to withhold information. I'm not asking you to believe me, I'm asking you to use logic. Ask yourselves, when in any case has a defendant been responsible for producing a police report? This is what I do know in conversations with our attorneys. On November thirtieth, Oxford High School administrative team, our staff, and many of our central office administrators remained at the high school until after nine P.M. They gave and signed their statements, some which were recorded by police body cams. Within hours of the incident, Oxford Community Schools turned over our entire server system, phone records, and all information asked by law enforcement, including the keys to this building. Second, Oxford Community, the second assertion made, Oxford Community Schools has attempted to cover this up by not releasing the hallway video. This video has been under a judge's protective order, not by Oxford Community Schools. Unfortunately, attorneys had to fight to view the video. That fight was between the prosecutor, the attorneys for both sides, and the judge, not Oxford Community Schools. I recall a board member, and what I recall, I recall a board meeting in which I said, quote, "The only path forward is the truth. We should own what we are responsible for, but we should not take ownership of what we are not responsible for." In closing, I want to get out in front of something for a change. The recent events have caused many people to have second thoughts about their willingness to take part in a meeting with a third-party review team. Please give it some strong consideration. In order to find out the facts, we need as much information as possible. I understand the concerns about being added to the lawsuit and that you may be scared to create unintentional harm for yourself or for someone else. Let mine be a cautionary tale. The regret of not being courageous in the moment is painful. As the accused goes to trial, the body of evidence will be presented, we must be prepared to support our students and one another. In order to do so, it is imperative that we create a foundation of trust. My hope is you will afford me the ability to regain your trust. This district's future depends on our ability to do so and your ability and your willingness to give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We're moving into unscheduled audience participation, uh, we're at number eleven, and the, by the way, some instruction, when your name is called, um, you'll be speaking from the podium there where the microphone is, Jill, would you make sure that microphone is, is lit up? There we go.
It's green, yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's, it's live. All right, um, pardon me? Oh, yeah, 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 thank you, um. So, Mary has a control button that triggers a light on the podium, she will hit that at four minutes just to let you know that you have one minute left to, to, um, to finish your statement, and then she'll hit it again at five, um, and then we'll go on to the next person. The first person, the, the, first card I have is April Meadows, April Meadows?
Hi, um, I didn't want to be the first one to go up, so I apologized to everybody. I'm just a mom, I have an incoming freshman, and I just want to make a couple comments about the meeting tonight, um. The clinic idea is just stupid, I don't know where that came from, so I don't know what's going on there. It's not something that we need, um, I'm kind of surprised that all the security isn't really set, the kids are coming back in, what, sixteen days? I was expecting there to be a lot more for that incoming day, so I'm kind of taken back that this isn't done and prepared and ready for these kids to come back, I don't know if it's just the dog not coming in September, the kiosks all set up, everything, but it seems like, from what I heard tonight, it's not all totally ready for when they come back on the twenty-fifth, and I would have expected that to be immediate, like, super urgent for the kids coming back. I heard a lot of talk tonight about committees and training teachers and doing this, you're short-staffed as it is, I don't know where you're gonna find all these committees of these outsiders where you're bringing all these people in, but you've got the community right here, and I think more than anything from, um, what we need is the families to come back in, the parents, and to be parents to the kids, you're talking about mental health with your clinic, I'll get to know all the kids in the freshman class if you want, and I can tell you what's going on with all of them, because I'm a mom, that's what I do, but I don't hear from all these committees that you're bringing in and outside companies and, and things that are going on, that's not helping what's kind of sitting right here, and I think that that's what I'm looking for is, um, I'm naive, I got a naive son coming into school, he's not nervous at all, he's so excited to get to high school, the kid can't wait, I'm scared for him, because I don't know what the people around him are gonna be like, so this, last year was his first year in public school, so it was a big adjustment for us, um, so to send him to high school, I'm a bit hesitant, I don't know what's going on, but as the school and you guys being in charge, I want to know that there's a big, like, hug around him when he gets there, you know, I'm not asking you to coddle my child by any means, but they're children, and I want them to know that they're safe, and if that means bringing more of the community in, I think that that's something that should be looked at.
Thank you. One that I just received, Tim, you recently must have gone to Angela?
Well, Tom, this is more directly pointed at you, you know, I watched the videos of you saying, you won't watch the video, you won't, you're the captain of this ship, you know, I didn't want to watch my son's best friend get put in the grave, I didn't want to watch that, I didn't want to go down to the emergency room and watch him on the table there, I didn't want to watch that, but I had to, and you're the captain of this ship, and you need to watch the video and figure out for yourself what happened, okay? Because you need to know everything that happened before you could run off and make emails behind your computer and put whatever you want to seventeen-hundred people in the community, your opinion of one small subject when you haven't even watched the video. So you need to sit down and watch the video, okay? Because I could say a lot more, but that's all I'm gonna say tonight, watch the video and figure out the facts before you run your mouth.
Andrea, Andrea Jones?
Institutional courage is an institution's commitment to seek the truth and engage in moral action despite unpleasantness, risk, and short-term cost. It is a pledge to protect and care for those who depend on the institution. Institutional betrayal is defined as the wrongdoings perpetrated by an institution upon individuals dependent upon that institution, including failure to prevent or respond supportively to wrongdoings by individuals within the institution. As a community, we are dependent upon Oxford Community Schools. We look to our school admins and board members to set an example for our children that they can emulate and apply, not only to their learning, but in the manner they conduct themselves in everyday life. These people are often regarded as role models and considered to be pillars of the community. Over the last nine months, we as a community have looked to our school leaders to be these role models. We have given our most precious gifts, our children, to your care on the good faith agreement that you had their best interest at heart. When we doubted you, you told us to trust you. We ask you to fulfill the core values that Oxford Schools is built on, trust, integrity, commitment, collaboration, honesty, and accountability, and you have continued to fail at meeting those values and instead replaced them with deflect, deny, distract, and divide. The last communication from our board president was nothing more than a weak attempt to continue to divide this community. The level of victim blaming and gaslighting of members of this community, including victims' families' members, is appalling and shameful. We will no longer tolerate this behavior from those who we chose to represent all of us. This board no longer has the best interest of this community at heart and has chosen betrayal over courage. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the current members of the Oxford Community School Board resign immediately.
Connie McCarthy? McCarthy?
Hi, friends, it's been a hot minute. Your gaggle program, a Google document, was sent to my son, who is fifteen. He opened the document for five seconds, decided it was too long to read, he closed it. That was at five-thirty A.M. on a Sunday, by eight A.M. on Sunday, CPS and the Oakland County Sheriff's Office was called to my house. They said my husband was a threat, they wanted to remove the kids and my husband from my home. The paper stated that this boy was nineteen years old, that he was present on the thirtieth, that he was in band, that Mr. Gibson had a substitute. All the school psychologists could validate was the fact that Mr. Gibson, Gibson did in fact have a substitute. She sent me the document after I requested it, and once reading it, I called her back and I said, this wasn't my child, at five-thirty in the morning that night, because my kids were scared of the storm, we were watching Beauty and the Beast. The program needs slight tweaking. I understand that you guys won't step down. I get that, I think we all have received that message. What I don't understand is how we have families here that are hurting, families that have lost their children, and we haven't done anything for them, we have families with injured and we haven't done anything for them. It really hurts my heart that I can't financially afford to move out of this district and I have to send my children back to you guys, I don't feel safe, it makes me sick. I had to go into therapy over the summer just to try to mentally deal with returning my children to this school. I think the teachers are wonderful, but on the eleventh of November, you guys were receiving phone calls about TikToks being made and the school-
phone calls about TikToks being made and a school shooting threat. They're all in a thread on social media. You guys were receiving phone calls over other threats, and Pam Parker Fine had called parents and assured us that we were okay when we were not okay. By sending my son back to this school, I am putting his life in your hands. And I know without a fact, you guys can't guarantee him to come home to me. I know that by sending him here, I risk not seeing my child again, and that's a really tough pill to swallow. Because I had to hold my children as their friends died on the 30th, and they said all they did was go to school. Mom, why did they have to die? And there is nothing that you can tell your children to that answer, because the answer is, "I don't know." I feel like we had the red flags. I feel as if there are processes that we could review for our children to make it better, to make our school safer. I am pleading with you, from all of us parents that have to send our children to your school, please revise your policies. Please look at what went wrong. Something went wrong. Kids died. We don't need more to die. I hope lightning doesn't strike twice here. I hope we don't lose any more children. But I don't know that I trust your words to return my babies to me or anyone else's.[696.32][696.32][applause]
Jace. Jace McCarthy?
Good evening. I'm Jace McCarthy. I am a recent graduate of Oxford High School. I do want to say this is the last thing I'm wanting to do today. I don't like coming to these as much as, I assume you don't like hearing me, which is completely fair. I want to talk about the clinic. I think it's a terrible decision to make, especially after November, just for the fact that we are letting the community use it, as that's what I'm assuming. No, we're not?
No, it was only, sorry, telehealth.
Telehealth?
The community is not coming in to use it.
For, for a while, okay.
A while, a year.
So, for a while, but still, at some point, they will be able to come into the school. Awesome. So, it's the security of how to get into the school. Do they have ID checks and clear backpacks? Do they have to bring into the doorbell so they look like they're normal to come into the building? Because for three years of my school, and not the rest of my classmates can say this, I got to have a false sense of security coming to Oxford High School. I had a false sense of security of seeing threats on bathroom stalls and TikToks and social media posts and okay-to-says and announcements over the headboard saying it's nothing to worry about. But my friends and my siblings don't get to have that anymore. It's simply something that doesn't exist here. I don't think students feel safe, and maybe that's just me talking about myself, but I feel like a lot of my classmates can agree. A month before, in October, me and my older brother bonded over some threat on a bathroom stall, not to know a month later he would come home and cry to my mom that he lost his friend.[851.76][851.76][laughter]
You got him.
I don't think it's fair that any student has to come back and walk through these halls. And my brother's lucky enough to have graduated at that point and not have to walk through those halls, because I think he would rather do tens of millions of things than walk back into this building. He's sworn off this building, as many other students have. And I don't think you should be okay with that. I don't think you should feel comfortable in the fact that students don't want to come back here. What can you do to change that? Some students said that a memorial would make them feel better here. You denied that. You said that experts and we're looking over past schools. Other schools have torn down. Other schools have shut off parts of the building that it happened, and we're not doing that. We came back two months later, if not even less. And we continue to walk through the school. When August, mid-August starts, they have to come back and relive this, and we're just okay with that? I, I'm not okay with that. The fact that people have said that there is not very much change here, I don't see anything new security-wise, and that's not going to be back till September or even later? Like, how are kids supposed to come back and feel safe? How, how am I supposed to be okay with my friends coming back here, or my siblings or my family members? Because like Dan said, he views his loved ones as, his friends as loved ones. I do too. I think all of us do. And we're just blindly sending them here. And that's not fair. It's not fair that you have let down families once, and I don't think it's fair that you can let them down again.
Andrea Hamilton?
I'm a mother of five. I have one in college, one here at the high school, one in the middle school, one starting elementary, and one that didn't make it through COVID. She should be too, in September. And I share this, not for pity, but something that helped get me through that loss was other parents who also lost their children, and them speaking up and their support. I haven't been vocal. I've been quiet, and I want to, I want to use my voice now to support Hannah's family, Justin's family, Tate's family, and Madison's family. The last email that I received from you, Mr. Tom Donnelly, I felt like I was being asked to not speak, that people who have feelings like I do about what happened on November 30th should just trust the district and move on. I don't trust the district, and we don't just move on trusting the district. We ask Another thing about me that you don't know is I worked in mental health for 20 years, close to 20 years, evaluating people of all ages for homicidal and suicidal thoughts. As a licensed master-level social worker for Lapeer County. The immediate information that came out after the 30th not only had me irate as a mom of a student, but irate as a social worker who has placed students in a hospital for much less information than what was shared, that was public.[1143.01][1143.01][applause] The option to go home would have never been an option that I would have given. But I, I just want to make that piece public because there's too much, I feel, is being covered up. Excuse my nerves and my maybe disorganized thoughts here. I've not really spoken up since, since I lost my daughter and I haven't been working. And I need to get out of that funk, and this is my first step. And I just want those four families to know that I'm here to speak up again and again
Megan Gregory?
My name is Megan Gregory. To those of you that don't know this, I am one of the people that Pastor Donnelly is referring to in his email. I'm here to try to understand tonight how we got to this point. I know for our family, we have always trusted Oxford Schools with our children. We appreciate the changes being made to safety procedures and look forward to hearing more about how the kids feel after getting acclimated to them. We've been quiet from day one. We could have run into the community, run our mouths, sharing every discrepancy. What you did to our son on November 30th, we have never spoken about. But people still ask why our child cannot live the life that he was supposed to be living. We chose to let all of this play out and hope the truth would surface. Unfortunately, when it didn't, we had to take it a little further. Again, I feel we have been more than patient. I'm trying to understand, with as patient and quiet as we have been, why you would choose to turn this personal? How unprofessional to try to place blame on us for the community divide.[1342.62][1342.62][applause] The community divide started well before us bringing this fact to light. And once you watch that video, I hope you choose to retract your statement.[1367.16][1367.16][applause] Statements like those are what caused the divide in our community. I don't like being in this position. I don't believe any of us do. Just imagine how differently this could have gone with full transparency from day one.[1389.01][1389.01][applause] You need to accept mistakes, own it, learn from it, and let the community begin to heal.
Caleb Watson?
If that last name sounds familiar to you, that's because on November 30th, my younger brother, Aiden Watson, was shot in this high school. So you'll have to forgive me if I'm a little nervous standing up here. Thinking about that day brings a lot of feelings. None of them are good. Many security measures were mentioned that seemed pretty nice, but if I'm being honest, it isn't enough. They're reactionary rather than preventative. I mean, while many of the topics addressed in the mental health presentation went over this, it doesn't sound much different than what we already have. What's to stop a counselor from conducting his own evaluation again? What are the procedural processes and the policy changes to this? Look at Alice Training. It focuses on what to do in the moment rather than how to prevent something from happening. What more is extra procedures going to do to help us? I mean, if someone's already in the school with a weapon, how do you plan on stopping them? You might stop them when they come in, but there are other ways that they could get a gun into the school. I mean, what are you doing about after-school hours? When my family got here, we didn't know where this was being held, and we just started walking around the school. No one stopped us. We just walked around until someone finally pointed us in the right direction.[1528.41][1528.41][applause] I mean, school starts in what, three weeks? That's ridiculous. There should be something happening now, especially since extracurricular activities are already happening. Students are already back at the school. Even though class hasn't started, they're here. They're playing foot, they're playing football. They're practicing band. I mean, there's really nothing stopping someone from coming in here and planting a gun that they could use the next day. There's nothing stopping that. Nothing.[1560.01][1560.01][applause] The study you showed said that 34% of students feel safe while 37% of students are unsure. I want to know what the other options were to this survey, because that doesn't leave a whole lot of extra room for other answers.[1576.66][1576.66][applause] And based on what was said, 600 students out of 1,700-plus answered this? So here's some math for your study. 34%, that sounds pretty impressive, but that's only 204 kids. That's not a number to be proud of. That's not.[1595.88][1595.88][applause] To even praise those results is disgraceful to every single student in this building and outside of this building, in the middle school and all the elementary schools.[1611.01][1611.01][applause] I'm glad that you're planning on training staff, because now we know that at least four staff have failed these students. They failed to stop November 30th or parts of it. At least two of these staff members who have failed to help a student in a mental health crisis, who would go on to shoot my brother, are now being moved to areas where they're more likely to interact with students who may have mental health needs? How on earth does that make any sense? How does that make any sense?[1644.01][1644.01][applause] These people failed these students. They failed my brother. They should be removed from the district. There should be absolutely no debate about this whatsoever.[1661.12][1661.12][applause] The day of, a security guard, the day of the shooting, a security guard thought that it was a drill. As a former graduate of this student, I'm aware that no drill has ever used any realistic features such as makeup, so that's a load of horse shit.[1683.76][1683.76][applause] You can deny that it happened all you want, but that is the report that security guard gave to the police, and I'm going to trust that report more than someone who didn't watch the video.[1699.28][1699.28][applause] It's very funny to me that you said you found stuff out at the same time as us, as if that's a good excuse. So what are you saying? You haven't been investigating everything, or are you hoping we'll forget about it and ignore it?[1713.33][1713.33][applause] I noticed that you changed the public policy of what I'm doing currently, but what's so disgraceful and upsetting is that you won't change the policy of what happens to a student like Ethan. Seriously? I mean, seriously, people? How disgraceful. How disgraceful. The bottom line is that the failure to train these staff members led to almost all of the victim families having to be here today. It's hard not to be upset when it just feels like you constantly blame us. So I'm sorry that I'm getting a little worked up, but I can't help it. I mean, it just feels like you constantly blame us, the victims, for what happened.[1759.16][1759.16][applause] I sincerely hope that you've taken all of these things into consideration, because I feel like it is very important for the people to know the unfiltered opinions of the families of the victims.
Why not?
How dare you?
Let him come.
Seriously?
Guys, please, just, I have one more thing to say. Please think twice before you send out crass emails that victim shame and really do divide the community, because as much as you want to blame us, you guys are the ones dividing us, not the victims. You guys.[1794.01][1794.01][applause] And this is especially evident when the last time the school sent And this is especially evident when the last time the school sent out a directive was to tell students to stop reporting things. How disgraceful. If you take anything away from today, just know that this is entirely disgraceful.
Brenna Tonkovich?
Hello, my name is Brenna Tonkovich. I'm a student at Oxford High School. I've never done this before, so I'm a little bit nervous, but there's a few things that I wanted to bring up to you today. I want to know what's gonna be told to the incoming freshmen who come in next year and how we're gonna make sure that they're respectful of the situation, because I watch them on the bus every day, and they'll scream at random times, they've connected to speakers on the bus and played out loud noises, and it's extremely triggering. I also want to know when I'm a senior, because I was a freshman last year, we're gonna be the last class of students who was there that day, and that means that everyone else in the school won't have that exact shamed experience as we did. And that's really scary because, well, as much as I don't know where we'll be in three years, I also don't know how they're gonna be in three years. And then, also in regards to the metal detectors, or whatever they're called, they're not-- Like, are they gonna be there at after-school activities, like football games or practices? Because I walked into school today for swim practice, and the doors were locked, so we had to have a friend let us in. When it was time for practice, we had to put a chair in the door to prop it open, but that kind of defeats the purpose of security. So I don't really-- I feel like we need those there so we know what's being brought into the school. I bring in a duffel bag every day. It doesn't get looked through. I could easily do anything. Not that I would, but I easily could, and that haunts me because even last year, they would just take all those bags and put them in one closet. They rarely had anyone around them. If anyone wanted to, they could walk up. It's not like you constantly have people watching the security. So I just don't see how that's even effective and how you can not check them every day. All I had to do was put it on a rack, and everyone was supposed to trust that they were safe. And they didn't go through them while we were in the school, so I just don't see how that really did anything. I also find it odd that you guys could hire someone in security who doesn't know how to do their job. I really want to know the hiring process and how that happens because for someone to be in the police for 28 years and then retire and work for the school for two years and to claim that they thought something was really good makeup is bull. It's bull. And I really, I don't-- I don't think that any of that makes sense, and I don't know how you could hire someone and let us feel as though our safety's in their hands when they walk around and then make testimonies saying that they thought it was a drill when we all know that those security guards should be informed when something was a drill? And you hear and see kids screaming, you hear gunshots, and say you think it was a really vivid drill? That's all I have to say.
Lori.
Thank you for having me today. I'm going to answer some of the board's recent email today, starting with, "These attempts to sway public opinion with speculation before investigations are complete are counterproductive and designed to divide us." What investigations? It's been nine months since the shooting. We should have a fully completed investigation by now. All the impactful facts should be out in the open by now, but this board's done everything possible to stop this from happening. This is your fault. This will continue to happen for many years to come due to your insistence in hiding the facts from us. From now until the trials take place, we'll continue to learn information together. You have the information. Those videos are yours. The policies, they're yours. The procedures are yours. One of you got on the loudspeaker and told all the staff and students to stop reporting threats. We are not learning this together. You may choose to be ignorant to the facts, but we do not forgive you for this. It was your job to know what was happening leading up to that day and the days after. Do not come to us saying, "I won't look," and pretending it's the same as the rest of us who are told we can't look. Give us the facts and let us decide if we want to see them. Give us the same choice you have and stop using your ignorance as a way to hide. We will not allow these actions to distract us from our mission of promoting healing and providing a world-class education to our children. We will not heal until all the facts are known. You are the reason we hurt month after month as these facts only come out due to civil lawsuits. These families had to sue to get the facts. These facts only highlight that the choices this board previously made are the reasons the lawsuits are needed. We would have no facts if it weren't for these lawyers, the same lawyers that Mr. Donnelly wants to place the blame on for causing division. This board could have completed an investigation within months and provided all of these hurtful facts to us well before now so we could heal. You chose not to, so now we get to hear the facts from the view of those lawyers who are suing you bit by bit, month after month. An email, no matter how flowery, no matter how manipulative, and no matter how many others it points blames to, is not going to sway this community into believing the families of our dead and injured are to blame and that their representatives and them are the reasons for our pain? Our pain stems from your lies, you covering up the facts, and Mr. Donnelly's continued manipulation attempts through his inappropriate emails and media interviews. Finally, I've always believed the board's mission was to provide a world-class education to our students, but it sure doesn't seem like the kids are the priority, and if they aren't the priority, then it doesn't seem like the focus is on their education. In fact, Dan admitted that today. You are not focused on the education. These kids have been through extreme trauma at a young age. This board has told us many times that they will not allow something to happen that a large number of students requested even because it might traumatize a student. But then you tell us you're going to open the high school to the general public? Public that you do not monitor on social media, the public that's coming in the building that are coming here because they're not mentally or emotionally well to get mental help? While counseling services are desperately needed for our students and teachers, you will be threatening their safety by allowing the general public in. You already told us through your lawyers that you do not have a duty to protect these students from acts of violence other than by a school employee. How this board can tell us that and then even consider allowing the public access to the high school makes absolutely no sense. And this doesn't even take another event like COVID into consideration. Bringing sick people into the high school, no matter how careful you think you are being, could end with our community being a super-spreader and more dead just from that. Open a nursing station for our students and school staff only, but anything that comes with even a minimal possibility of being open to the public is wrong. You can't use governmental immunity to hide any wrongdoings that happen due to you inviting the general public into this building where our children are. I can guarantee you-- I guarantee that lawyers will make sure that if something happens, you will be held accountable. The courts will not be favorable to the school if another incident happens here. Our government will not overlook another event here. Our community will not support you if you invite more tragedy here. Our students can't handle strangers walking on the property and into the building. They can't handle one lockdown due to a security risk from that clinic, and they need to feel safe. And all the good this clinic would bring would be destroyed and undone with just one scare. And waiting for that last grade that was here that day to get out to allow the public in is not the answer either. Those kids were hurt that day too. Their siblings were there, their friends, their neighbors, their babysitters were here, and-- To even hear that you've considered this has been absolutely shocking. Don't move forward with the horrible idea. And finally, Dan, one part of your speech was great. In fact, it was so great, I think every single one of these meetings for the next 11 years should start and end with, "We are sorry. We regret the mistakes and choices we made."
Carrie-- It looks like it's two names, Carrie and Michael.
Hello, my name is Carrie Borsima, or my husband, Michael Borsima. I don't really know what to say because my son hasn't been to school since COVID hit. He was in middle school. This will be his first year coming back to Oxford High School, and that terrifies me because I don't trust any of you at all. I don't. But he is 16, and I can no longer keep him home because he wants to socialize. So I have to let him go back to school. But I don't trust you. So let me just say, like, if you, one of you, had lost a child that day, what would we be doing right now? What would we be doing right now? Send up there staring at me with your blank look and your crappy emails? Is that what we would be doing? Because it's not. Have a nice night.
Renee.
Good evening. My name is Renee Beatham. I have two daughters that have graduated from this school. I currently have a senior in this school. I appreciate the epiphany that was disclosed under the clarifications tonight. However, trust needs to be earned still. I don't have trust in this board. I'm an out-of-district parent. I really don't want my daughter coming here, but she loves her teachers, she loves her friends, and so she's coming back. But trust needs to be earned again, and-- The attorney works for Oxford Community Schools. The attorney can provide guidance and recommendation. However, it is your determination, your decision on whether you act on that information. Every single one of you on this board has your own voice. Nobody should be able to strong-arm anybody on this committee. If this board wants to earn trust back, you need to pay attention to your words and your actions because it matters. Why today are we changing the policy on public comment? Yes, other school districts, they have other processes. They are not Oxford. Your community needs to be heard, and while that two minutes might not seem a lot, it sends a message that you do not want the public to speak at a board meeting. Therefore, we'll cut it from five minutes to three minutes. So again, each and every one of you board members, if you want to start to earn our trust back, you need to start performing actions that helps us regain that trust. And the first action should be going back to the five minutes instead of three. Thank you.
Craig Schilling.
Good evening. Craig Schilling. My son was murdered in this school. I'm just kinda here to address this email that was sent out to all the school district. I haven't really prepared anything directly. There was a few notes in the email that I was a little bit taken back by, and more or less along the lines of misinformation. I kind of feel-- That I-- I have-- I saw a video, okay, and this is kind of where this misinformation, I think, may have stemmed from, the fact that some other people haven't seen the video, so they haven't quite made the determination that we have made. And it wasn't a very easy determination to come to, to be honest with you. I had to suck it up as much as I could, and I had to go and see the video for myself because it was very shocking how it was delivered to me and how it was explained to me through my attorney. So I had to make the realization of what happened to determine my proper course of action, and I feel that I am-- And doing the right thing here and bringing it forward in this manner. I had to go through my attorney. I understand that there's a lot of legalities. You have legalities, and you know, I don't understand where-- I don't know where all of your legalities are, but I'm trying to just stick within the parameters of your lawyers, and you know, I've been told things. I've been told things. Everybody who's involved has been told things. So you know, basically, I get some little bits of information. I haven't had very much of it. I've been patiently waiting for eight months now, trying to, you know, keep my mind open and clear from, you know, speculation and rumors and opinions because everybody has one. So I've been relatively quiet, and I mean, I feel that where we're headed, where we're at right now in this civil suit that we're involved in is basically discovering things are starting to come out now, and we have had some information based in the beginning, and it's just been kind of slowly coming in, a little bit here, a little bit there. And every time it's been brought out and made public, there's been a press conference, and you know, and then it's all, it goes crazy from there. But-- I want to just try and bring it forward here that I-- We have a pretty skilled team of lawyers, and we talk about this stuff, and you know, we make the determination based on what we have coming in here. So I can assure you that I'm not one to just, you know, go on blast mode and just like start going ballistic on anybody unless I, you know, feel like I'm, you know, justifiable. So I mean, I kind of feel like, you know, words like allegations and misinformation is the stuff-- is the stuff that's really not necessarily appropriate at this time, as far as this is concerned. I feel strongly with the magnitude of everything that's happened here, that, you know, the process that we're in right now, sifting through all of the mountains of rubble and information that, you know, may have gotten, you know, I feel strongly that we're, we're going to come through, we're going to have all our questions answered. We might not get all of the questions answered, but I feel strongly that, you know, going through this process, we'll all have clarity and we'll all have some sense of closure, I guess, as difficult as it may be for some, or more difficult for some than it is for others. So I just wanted to just bring this out and just, you know, I don't want to blast anybody. I'm not, I'm not that kind of a guy. But I just want you to know that, I want it to be well-known throughout the community that I don't feel like what was said is misinformation. Okay? So I would just like to clarify that. Right? Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I had some, some stuff written up here, and pretty much everybody's stole my thunder, I guess, here, right? So, you know, we've got, you know, eight and a half months. Later, not one answer on what went wrong that day. No investigation, no police report. Check. Okay? There's no excuse for that. They're hiding behind governmental immunity all day long. It's amazing what can, what can get done when there's a will. Look what we've done in four months. Our family, our family has started Forty Two Strong in just four months. 240 kids, big business, right? What have you guys done? Zero. My boys coaching the community, our family keeps giving back to this community every day. Okay? So I want to, you know, everybody's hitting the, hitting the Donnelly email, so I don't, you know, the only thing I'm going to say about, about your email, Tom, is you saying that we are dividing the community? What are we doing with Forty Two Strong? Are we dividing the community? Are we bringing the community together, Tom? What are we doing? We're, we're bringing it together. Okay? I know that's not sexy, but we're bringing the community together. Okay? I want, I got a little story here about Tate's girlfriend. And, you know, this is kind of, you know, this hits me in the feels because we, I feel like we've got some people internally that don't give two shits about these kids in this school. Okay? So on the last day of school, Brady's mom, Jenna, received a call from Brady's counselor. She was listed or marked by somebody in the school, I think it was a teacher, that basically that she may need some assistance through the summer. So Mrs. Elling starts asking some questions, you know, and, and through, in the conversation between Mrs. Elling and Brady's counselor, Mrs. Elling said, "You do know that that was Tate's girlfriend, right?" Guess what the counselor's answer was? No. You kidding me? Like, if, 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 here I am, as a leader of our family, driving, trying to drive some positive change out of this, right? And I'm going to try and put my arms around every kid in our community. And this administration, this board, you guys don't, you guys don't come together and say, "All right, these four kids that were murdered in our care, let's, let's see who's closest with them in the school, and let's keep a close eye on those kids." What do you think, Cory? What do you think, Tom? Ken? Dan? Heather? What do you think? It's ridiculous. You guys don't care about the kids. Our community is tired of your rhetoric. We want to see action. You're all talk. You want to control the narrative. You answer to us. We control the narrative. Okay? Our family will never stop defending the dignity of Tate, Hannah, Justin, and Madison. I do, I do have a, I, you know, I'm sure you guys were aware of me and Mr. Mullins' exchange. He probably shared that with you. Yeah. So, you know, one thing I don't, I don't understand, and my light's not blinking yet here, and I don't understand how there's not back and forth here. Like, you guys can go, go hang out with the attorney, and there's back and forth dialogue, but there's not back and forth dialogue here. I don't quite get it. But, you know, one, one thing that is, is baffling to me is, is why? I don't care about that damn light. I've earned the right to stand up here as long as I want. Because I'm doing something about November 30th. That's one thing with this trauma. That was one note that I forgot to ma, oh, I know what it was. Dan, you, you made, you said something about there's no control that this board has over what the school does. So if they, if they don't want to, if they don't want to put a police report out there, there's nothing you can do about it. You said that, right? In your speech? Right? You didn't say that. You basically said, "There's nothing that you can do with the school and their attorneys. If they don't want to pull out, put out, put out a police report, there's nothing that you can do about it as a board, as a board member." Is that true?
No, I said, "The school does not have a police report." The school is not responsible for putting out a police report. That's the police's and the prosecutor. That's, that's what I said.
Oh, okay. So I misunderstood you. Okay, so there's nothing that you guys can do to hold, to hold? The prosecutor got a police report, right? Okay, they're, yeah, so I don't underst, I don't understand why our attorneys can't get a police report, our community can't get a police report.
Yeah. Give us the police report.
What's that, Heather?
Like, we didn't take the police report. The police have the police report because they did the report.
I know this is typically not an exchange, but I want to be crystal clear because I think maybe you misunderstood. When all the statements were, I'm going to read it again because I don't want you to be unclear. No, that's the whole thing, please. I can't get through the whole thing. So, I just want to say it real quick. The first thing, Oxford Community Schools can, does not, there was an assertion made that Oxford Community Schools continues to withhold information. I'm not asking you to believe me, I'm asking you to use logic. Ask yourselves, when in a case has a defendant been responsible for producing a police report? That information was taken by the police. From there, it goes to the prosecuting attorney. It's never the defendant's responsibility to, not that we even have it, that, and that's something that we don't have.
You know what happened that day. You might have to break down what these are for, but you know what happened.
So, continue. It's not a bad report.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Okay? So the bottom line is, there's nothing that you can do for our community, there's nothing you can do to help us get an answer for that day. Is that what you're saying? I mean, that's basically what, what's going on here, right? There's nothing that you can do. Your hands are tied as a board. I understand it's with the lawyers. So there's nothing that you can do for us. So you can, you can run that school, but since there's a lawsuit going on, there's nothing else that you guys can do there and hold, and, and hold the school accountable for anything as a board. There's nothing you can do. Is that true? For getting, getting answers to our community. All right. So, that's fine. We're good. You want me to quit talking, Dan?
No, no, I said, go ahead and finish.
No, no, we're, we're good. One last thing, Tom, you know, I got this check in the mail from you for about 800 bucks. And I don't want your money, there's blood on that.
How about we don't want a poll account call, Danielle?
We don't want a poll account call. Okay, I don't know if I'm the last one, but it's 11:30. Let's talk about the third-party review. In May, you finally agreed to conduct what was called an independent third-party review. The school board hired Barnum Law, who then in turn hired GuidePost. I just want to get my facts straight. You promised the community, the victims' families, the students, the teachers, the staff, that this review would examine all aspects of the days leading up to and including November 30th. The communication on this investigation has been slim to none. In fact, we've been here five hours, and we've heard the words "GuidePost" one time from Dan, and "third-party review" maybe twice. Dan's the only one who encouraged people to talk to GuidePost tonight. I invited GuidePost here, I don't know if they're here, but I invited them so they could see this toxic environment. And the repeat asks for transparency. As a mother, as a friend of victims and families and students and teachers, I have been persistent, and maybe you think I'm a pain in the ass, but I've been persistent to help bring transparency and accountability. And my recent ask for you to disclose the actual details of GuidePost's responsibility, scope of services, timeline, et cetera, expectations, was a genuine opportunity for me to help build transparency with community, many of these people sitting here tonight. I know you maybe think I'm, I'm talking for myself. I'm not. I'm talking for everybody sitting here. I was told, Danielle, we can't answer all your questions. We've got a FOIA process. I submitted the FOIA that day. I received a response from your attorneys five days later, exercising their right to extend another 10 days. So 15 days to disclose a contract, which should only disclose the scope of services expected from GuidePost, 15 days for, for an initiative to rebuild trust and bring transparency to this community. 15 days. I received the contract yesterday at 5:00 PM. 5:00 PM, it's right here, it's like four pages. I have 25 years' business experience, half of which is spent in contract management. I have negotiated million-dollar contracts and $500,000 contracts, which is, I believe, the estimate for this one. There is nothing in this contract which states what GuidePost will deliver. There's no obligations in this contract to deliver a report. Nothing. The only obligation is to deliver any information gathered to Barnum Law. Now, today, because I'm resourceful, I went back to the GuidePost site, and I saw that they updated the website. You know that. They updated it on July 28th. Why didn't you tell this community? Why didn't you put that in your email? Hey, anybody interested in providing insight and information on the events leading up to the death of four of your, four students in your school? Why aren't you, why aren't you begging people to contribute? And then you're going to sit up here and wonder why trust is lost? There's no transparency. A couple things in this contract say that GuidePost has agreed to perform certain investigative consulting services. That's it. There's no mention of November 30th, by the way. The purpose is to perform certain services and consult with you concerning your legal strategy and advise your client, the Board of Education, or the Board of Education at Oxford Schools. So again, I think we are well within our rights to understand what the scope and expectations are. What is put on the website doesn't jive with the obligation in the contract. It doesn't. So how are we supposed to trust that that's what will be delivered? It's the perfect example, and you're not communicating it, you're not encouraging it, so why should we trust? Why should we trust it? Quick, quick final thought. In January, when you guys were doing your board elections and voting on who, and you guys were putting in your names for, "I want to run for president, I want to be VP," whatever, Dan, I think, suggested to be president. And Tom was insistent that it was important for him to stay president, to minimize change on the board, not disrupt during these times. Well, this community wants change. We want a leader, we want a leader in that role that says, "You know what? As hurtful and traumatic as it is, it's my duty to watch the video, to get the answers. You represent this community. You don't represent your church, you don't represent your circle of friends. You represent the community. You have failed us. You have failed us. Tate, Hannah, Madison, and Justin deserved better. Keegan, Aiden, Riley, Eli, Phoebe, Kylie, John, Molly, and all the other students in this district deserve better. If you cannot handle the job, please step down."
Angela, any, any other cards? Okay, so that was the, the last card. Anything on clarification? All right, that's, um, final board comments? That's, um, final board comments? Final board comments?
Mr. Donnelly, I did have one comment. I just wanted to remind everybody that Ava Swiss was on AGT tonight. I do believe we have until midnight to vote. We have until, I do believe we have until midnight to vote for Oxford's own Ava Swiss on AGT. Go Ava.
Meeting adjourned.